Okay, let's go. Okay, good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 12th Committee Meetings and Committee of the Whole for the Mill Creek Township School District Court of Directors. In addition, we are meeting this evening back in the boardroom at Mill Creek Education Center. Some of our viewers this evening may ask when they'll be able to return to the meeting in person. While we can't wait to see you again in person, the current regulations still limit the gatherings to 25% of a room capacity. And this capacity being 76, we're a maximum this evening. So, thank you and we'll keep you posted as Governor Wolf loosens some of the regulations. As usual, we are streaming live on YouTube this evening and this meeting will be recorded. You can also see this evening's agendas as well as a number of additional informational items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District, which has new posts added on a regular, ongoing basis. And with that, we'll start our committee meetings. And I believe the first one is Personnel and Policy Meeting. Janine?
Okay, Mr. Senator, would you please take a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Busco.
Here.
Ms. Capa Bianca.
Here.
And Ms. McQuinsey.
Here.
I'd like to make approval of our agenda, make a motion for an approval.
Second, Chris.
Aye.
Aye.
2.01 is Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting Minutes from March 8, 2021. I'll make a motion to approve those or accept those.
Second, Lisa.
All in discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion passes. 3.01, we have, finally have a number of policies that have come forward for policy and personnel. On policy 137.1 Extracurricular Participants by Home Education Students. All of these are current policies, so we'll just talk about what's been added or changed. And underneath Guidelines, you'll see in green if a, if a class for credit is held during the school day by the district and it's required for participation in activities that take place outside of the class. And this will exclude our home education students. They won't be eligible to participate in those particular activities. And that is the change for policy 137.1. 3.02, bear with me as I flip back and forth, is policy 150, and this is Comparability of Services. And this is in regards to our, for any one of our schools that receive Title I funds from the state and local funds, they must provide services taken as a whole that are at least comparable to the services in those schools that do not receive any Title I funds. And Mrs. Mosley, am I correct in saying that all of our schools are now Title I? Or is Asbury still?
Four of our five elementary are.
No, Asbury is not, thank you. And if you'll go under Delegation of Responsibility, you'll see that the federal program coordinator is a person who has been designated to, with the responsibility for those programs. 3.03 is policy 209 Health Examination and Screenings, and this is policy 209. And the district obviously wants to. In compliance of applicable laws and regulations, the board will have an approved policy and safety plan for screening and monitoring the students. As you scroll down to page, underneath page two or three, on health monitoring, the board will direct all staff to monitor the student's health in accordance with the applicable board policies in the board approved self, sorry, health and safety plan. If there are any students who have religious accommodations that they would like to be made, then of course, contact the school and the school will make those determinations upon consultation with the parents or guardians. 3.04, policy 216 For Student Records. You'll see the change has been made on page three or four. It's been added, paragraph that starts the administration shall, it will annually destroy special education records that are no longer relevant and necessary for, for the provision of special education services and related services to a student who has attended the district. However, any of the personally identifiable, identifiable information such as the name or address of any student will be kept on record for 100 years from the date that student turns 21 years of age. And then you'll see that there have also been some other changes regarding capitalization and addition of words in the policy. 3.05 to 17 Graduation Requirements. And if you scroll to page two, you'll see under delegation of responsibility for seniors. It starts out paragraph four seniors, they've changed the minimum from 13 to 12 for credit hours to be seated as a junior. 3.06, policy 10, and this is for purchases subject to bid and quotations. And the change to this particular policy underneath guidelines for the second paragraph, bid specifications shall provide for alternate, alternates whenever possible. And they have struck the paragraph, no bids will be awarded prior to the issuance of permits on construction projects. 3.07, policy 810.1 School Bus Drivers and Commercial Motor Vehicle Drivers. This policy refers to our, is applicable to our school bus drivers and the commercial, and the commercial motor vehicle drivers only. This does not apply to the school vehicles used to transport students, which do not qualify for the school bus. This will be under the Director of Personnel, I'm sorry. Under, under the Director of Personnel, and it is, this updates the reporting requirements for any misconduct. 3.08, policy 810.3 Is School Vehicle Drivers. For, and this is for the transportation vehicles other than school buses. And this updates the reporting requirements every year. They must submit a copy of their driver's license and it also has the. I'm sorry, I lost my time. This will update their reporting requirements. Should there be a, an incident that they need to report to the district. 3.09 is a policy maintenance agreement with PSBA. And this sets out our agreement with PSBA, how we work with them. They said they provide us with these policies, the updates for both policies and administrative regulations. And this is our, the policy for that participation agreement. 3.10 is a job description for the Coordinator of Strategic Development and Integration Technology. 3.10 is a job description for Finance and Accounting Manager. 3.1, I'm sorry, thank you. 3.12 is a job description for the Supervisor of English Language and Arts and Social Studies. And 3.13 is a job description for the Supervisor of Math and Science K through 12. I'd like to bring 3.01, 3.13 forward for the next committee meeting, for the committee, for the board meeting at the end of the month. On the motion?
Second, Chris.
Any discussion on all of those items? I know there was a lot there, so I thought we'd.
I have a question on policy 610 Purchases Subject to Bid Quotation. A line was struck under the guidelines, bid specifications shall provide for alternates wherever possible. No bids will be awarded prior to the issuance of permits on construction projects. Is there a reason why we redlined that?
Yes, primarily because right now, we're currently bidding about seven to eight months ahead of time. And BIU doesn't even issue permits prior to six months, if you can get, do so on that timeline. So, in order to maintain compliance with the policy.
Is that because of the current state of environment we're in now with COVID and everything?
No, that's. We adjusted our bidding timelines. Again, we pushed everything forward, so we're out ahead of all the other projects before we're on the contractor summer project list. Much ahead of time, it's resulted in what we believe is a financial savings because we are so early in our bidding. But in order to maintain that timeline, BIU doesn't issue permits prior than six months to commencing construction. So, we would either have to bid later to maintain compliance with the policy or adjust the policy and maintain the savings that were received.
But BIU does review the drawings.
Yes, Mike, you want to pack a little more on that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I just got the permits last week for our projects this summer. Just, they, you know, backed up over there and have a lot of work going on. So, you know, they gotta get a lot of stuff in order. They want contractors on board now before they'll even issue them, which again, is kind of, you know, speaking to what Aaron said. We gotta get them approved before we get the contractors on board to get the forms filled out, to get them to BIU to get the final permits. So, we put the permits in in August and we just got them last week. I officially have them in my office.
Well, are you saying that they need the contractor to fill out the form for approval?
For the building, the actual building permit form, they now want the contractor to fill it out. Before, they would let the owner representative fill it out. So, like I would fill it out and the engineer and architect would help me with that. Well, now they want the, the actual contractor, each of them, to fill it out. So, then I had to get all 20 contractors to fill out their portion and send it back, which took a little bit of time. So, again, amending this means we're not against the policy moving forward.
I, I guess, again, the, the actual review where they actually look at the lines and all that stuff is done ahead of time. But at some point, they need to get all these contractors in line to say, okay, I've reviewed it. I'm ready to give you the permit, but I need this information from you.
Yeah, and that's where I'd like to tell you that they did completely review it back in December when he told me he did. But as we know with the generator, I didn't find that out till March. So, I'm, you know, we'll still make sure to follow up with them and try to get as much, you know, any questions or comments they have prior to us awarding or even going out to bid. We'll still do that, but to officially get that permit, I need the contractors on board. So, up until that point, they can continue to review it, is my understanding.
Speaking of generators, any updates or?
May 13th, we'll have the appeals. I've already sent all the paperwork over to the township. We'll be ready for that day.
Thank you.
Follow up on Mr. de Plasko's question. The, the next line after that states, the change orders to bids may be granted to the Director of Finance and operations up to 10% of the total bid price. Well, I know that that is not changed. Do we have any concern about that considering that we may be coming into projects that are 10, $15 million? We're now authorizing the Director of Finance to make changes to bids up to one and a half million dollars. Should there be a cap in there before coming back? We haven't built a building in a while and we haven't done major renovations, so this policy may have some open risk there. Not that we doubt your good sense, but just as a point of clarity, do we need a cap in there? No, this is maybe granted by the Director of Finance.
No, because the, the purpose of the, of, of that sentence is to allow projects to move forward during the summer months when, for example, if you don't meet in the month of July, they're, they need, they have to have a change order. They need to keep the project moving. They can't wait for a board meeting to make that decision, though you could have a special meeting, obviously. But I think that sentence was put in there to allow that discretion. Typically, I don't think the change orders come out that, you know, 1.5 million dollars. But the, the provision in there, based on your example, could happen. I doubt the business manager would approve a 1.5 million dollar change order without asking for a special meeting. But that doesn't mean that it could happen and.
And I agree that the business manager should, finance director should have some autonomy in this process because, to exactly your point. But I, you know, we're talking about a policy, the policy should be written in a way that the board considers all scenarios, not just the typical scenario. Suggestion.
It's up to the board as whether you want an additional cap in there or, or not. Maybe there's a level that the administration is comfortable with and they could discuss that and determine whether that would be a cap. What they're comfortable moving forward with without requesting the board's action. That would be one way to solve the situation. Of course, that, you know, every project's different, so.
Am I correct in remembering a couple of years ago was that we put that provision in there in particular? It was within my time on the board, so the last five to six years, we added that to avoid those problems. When we were doing some other construction, I remember at the high school, we, in MIHS, we were doing some work so that we didn't run into where we're calling a meeting or worse yet, which we don't, you know, we can zoom in today. But we had the problem with the, with us not being here in July, I believe in July. So, I think that was just recently added to avoid the holdups in the project. And we do have the ability of Zoom now, so if there wasn't a meeting, an issue, I'm certainly could call a Zoom meeting and discuss it. I don't know if we necessarily need to go back to what we previously had in the policy. Since we just recently changed it for that purpose, recently, within the last four to five years. But, I mean, someone could always, you know, draft a provision. But, I mean, someone could always, you know, draft the provision, submit it, and within the next two weeks before the board meeting, it can be considered, and we can bring it up then.
Thank you for the historical background.
You're welcome.
I mean, you could do 10%, not to exceed $100,000, if you wanted to do that. I don't know.
That's more my concern, is we just, I agree with the 10%, I just think that there's an upper limit to what 10% stops. And, you know, I know that our Director of Finance has good sense and has led the district well, but we're talking about a policy, and, you know, we can't always assume that he will be the Director of Finance, or that scenario's changed.
So, Aaron, what point would tie your hands too much versus what's, you know, acceptable or reasonable in making a day-to-day, as we're looking at these projects?
I mean, I guess what I've seen from other school districts, when I was working on the design side, is usually it's a threshold amount, so it's up to $10,000 or $15,000 on an issue. You know, if something gets above that point, then they're going to discuss it, bring it forward. What I've seen before is clerk of the works or construction manager had the ability up to $10,000 or $15,000 on a single change order to approve it. So that's, that's the only thing I've seen. I mean, the biggest thing is just making sure the projects keep moving.
Exactly.
I mean, last year's a good example. Maybe we technically could have approved the fireproofing spray ahead of time, but we brought that to you, because we're always going to bring that stuff to you before, before we make a big decision like that, especially if it has a BIU, something.
Based on my knowledge of other policies of this nature, I don't see anything less than $50,000 in a construction project, when you're dealing with a major construction project. I think that's probably the minimum, because things could change rapidly, they could have an unexpected situation that they need to work quickly. So I would say at least 50, and whatever the finance department's comfortable.
Yeah, I'm, speaking from the finance department, I'm rather comfortable, because again, the intention of this was, we were talking about projects a couple hundred grand, not millions of dollars. So in terms of putting a cap on that, whether that be 100, 150,000, I think the biggest change order we brought forward last year was the fireproofing of the rooms, for which was a grand total of $60,000, I believe, roughly around there. Again, we would use this authority prudently, because we're not going to just approve $100,000 change order without bringing that forward.
So, does the committee want the solicitor to make a change to this policy as is, or leave it as is, and bring it forward?
I think, I mean, some concerns have been raised by board members. As far as the committee chair, I really, if we want to maybe look at the language and see if there's a, what you draft, and we can consider it. I don't want to say we're going to change it for sure, but like, sure, if you want to draft a new, when can, you know, talking to Aaron and decide what would be a good level, if we're going to do percentage-wise, or something like that, or a hard dollar number, then we'll take that under consideration.
Bring a couple alternatives and move it forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Just before you move on, I would just like to remind the board members, could you please speak into the microphone? Some of the viewers can't hear some of the conversations, so I ask, when you speak, lean into your microphone here, so our listening audience and our viewers on YouTube will be able to hear the conversation. Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm probably one of the, one of the people not talking in. So we have 3.01 through 3.13 to move forward, make a motion to move forward to the board meeting.
Second.
We already did do that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and lastly, we have 3.14, which is the April Personnel Report. So for April 12, 2021, at Asbury, we have a change of status for our staff nurse, and the hours are reduced temporarily due to the pandemic. At Chestnut Hill, we have a retirement for a student intervention specialist after 30 years of service, and we have the retirement of a staff nurse after 13 years of service. At Grandview, we have a leave of absence, the academic educational assistant. At Tracy, we have a retirement of an educational assistant after 24 years of service. Tracy, we have another, we have a resignation of an art teacher, and a change of status of a custodian from first shift to second shift, Walnut Creek to Tracy. For McDowell Intermediate, we have a retirement of a certified school nurse after 24 years of service. We have a retirement of our earth and science teacher after 24 years of service, and an ESL teacher after 17 years of service. And we have a change of status from a Saturday part-time shift to a full-time first shift custodian. At McDowell, we have a retirement of our French teacher after 14 years, and we have a resignation of an educational assistant. And a resignation of our HVAC maintenance. And we have recommendations for the 2021 board-approved volunteers for a track at Westlake, baseball at McDowell, and boys lacrosse, MIHS, and McDowell, and girls' basketball at McDowell. We have our first student employee activity, we have a new employee and a retirement. We have a virtual teacher for grades seven through eight for social studies by letter of appointment. And we have our 2021 athletic supplementals, our 21 ESY summer staff, and 2021 CCS summer We have a supervisor of HR to an executive assistant, and our 2021 substitutes, child development, and preschool assistant. And then on pages three through six, you will see the following extracurricular and athletic coaching positions, and salaries and stipends will be payable only if the position is filled and the activity is conducted as determined by board action. And you'll see those with the name and the stipend after it. Page four, 2021 ESY summer staff, and then the summer, the CCS summer staff, to close it out. I'll make a motion to move that forward to the board meeting.
Second, Chris.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have 4.01, we don't have any informational items for personnel and policy, and 5.01, do we have any questions? If this is. Do you not see any hands raised? Yes, Mr. Eliot. Mr. Eliot, can you hear me?
Yes, she's coming in very, very faint. And I'm having difficulty, maybe I'm getting old, I don't know, but it is, I have my audio up to 75 out of 100. So I would appreciate, and I'm sure that the public would appreciate, if you could speak into the microphone and maybe removing the mask for that specific period of time. But anyway, thank you for recognizing me. I made this suggestion, I think, four or five years ago, while I was a board director. It would be greatly appreciated if the public would have some knowledge base of what you're talking about relative to whether it's finance, whether it's personnel, whether it is policy, because I can't write that fast, and I can't record it and then reexamine what you are talking about. So please consider it, the school board directors and President, Board President Winchell. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, don't see anybody else with any questions at this time. Okay, 6.01 is adjournment for Personnel and Policy Committee. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That adjourns policy and personnel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move to Instruction and Student Services. Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you. Item 1.01, roll call. Mrs. Sitter, would you mind?
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Dr. Lansberry.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Thank you.
1.02, Approval of the Agenda. I'd like to make that a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 2.01, Instruction and Student Services Committee Meeting Minutes. I'd like to move that forward as a motion that we accept that. Do you have a second?
Second, Rick.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, there are only three action items in Part Three. Dr. Stoops and Dr. Nintemp, I believe you'll give us some background on these. 3.01, Middle School Planner's Contract.
Those are budgeted for the actual physical planner that we do issue to students, that they can better prioritize, help keep themselves organized, set forth reminders. We found that it's particularly effective for kids that are transitioning into middle school.
And that amount of $2,130 is similar to what we paid last year for those planners?
That is correct.
It's the same company, and it's nothing new.
Right.
Okay, item 3.02, the Interactive Science Three-Year Extension Quote for Grades Six through Eight.
Our middle-level online resources expire at the end of this year, technically, I believe in August, and we were able to secure a three-year extension for all three, all three grade levels, to provide that. That was far more fiscally prudent than moving ahead to get a new series or a new resource. So that amount is actually about $110,000 less than if we had purchased a new service. So we opted to go provide the three-year online renewal, to give us a little bit of time to look at some more resources and to vet some other areas, so.
Dr. Stoops, is that like a plug-in module, or is that an online learning-type module?
Online.
Online?
Yes.
How do we track the usage for the teachers and how often they're using it, or, you know, to make sure it's an effective program?
Right. We rely heavily on like the department chairs to help facilitate that information. We do see that some teachers do favor, maybe a little bit more than others do, but we look at that, reconcile that a couple of different times throughout the year to see why, or why people are using them more than others, and have that dialogue with them. So try to be consistent.
Thank you.
And that's a supplemental resource.
That is correct. That is not the actual online resource.
Students can use that at home or in school.
That is correct.
And as we move into this new world of in-person and virtual, our 100% virtual students are also able to use that.
That is correct. That would be for every student regardless of whether, what their status is.
And item 3.03, UPMC Western Psych Hospital Services Agreement.
Yes, Mrs. Winchell, the UPMC Western Psychiatric Hospital Agreement is an agreement between UPMC Western Psych and the school district for their licensed academic school, should a student from Mill Creek be admitted to Western Psych, which happens on occasion for various reasons, and this would cover admission to the hospital for mental health, or also to their partial program, which they operate as well, at $75 per academic day that the students spend there.
Good. I'd like to move those three items forward as a motion. Do you have a second?
Second, Dean.
Is there any additional discussion about any of those items?
Yes, Mrs. Winchell, I have a question about item 3.02, the Interactive Science Three-Year Extension, and Dr. Stoops can answer this question for me. What is the copyright of this subject matter? Is it really a 2016 version, or is it a 2011 version that we are using? Because the document notes that it's a 2016 courseware three-year license, but then it says copyrighted 2011. What are we looking at the actual date of the material that we're utilizing?
I'll have to look at the exact, to be sure. I believe it is the 2011 version that we are extending further, that the company does have available, but I'll check on that.
So we're looking to use a 2011 version for science?
Yes, it's an extension of what the teachers are already using.
Okay. When are we looking at moving our course material into this decade?
We have a rotation sequence in schedule that I'd have to look to see exactly when the, what the renewal is for. I know that math is on our radar for next year for piloting and for purchase the following year, followed by ELA, and I believe the science is the following year after that.
So what is this typical rotation? 10 years, 15 years?
Usually about eight years, actually, would be typical.
Although, quite honestly, we haven't really stuck to that eight-year rotation. I mean, we have in some cases, but there are some cases that we have materials that students are using that are beyond the eight years.
That is correct.
So this one really needs to be looked at in the near future, I'm assuming? I mean, we're adding three years to this, so that means that we're now going to be pushing 14 years on this subject matter?
Well, a little bit of that would be due to the national science standards that are going to be updated in terms that'll affect Pennsylvania, the next-generation science. That can has been kicked a little bit from the national and from the state level, so it's kind of a bit of a holding pattern, sort of, until those standards come out and they're released formally, what that's going to look like for a lot of districts that are looking to do the renewal. But once that kicks in, that will be the catalyst to move a lot of the curriculums upgraded, move them forward.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on any of those three items? Okay, all in favor of taking those forward to the meeting at the end of the month, say aye.
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 4.01, I don't believe there are any informational items this evening, this year. 5.01, Questions from the Public. Mrs. Sitter, are there questions?
Yes, Mr. Eliot. Mr. Eliot, do you have a question?
Yeah, no, I have a comment. Let me congratulate Mrs. Winchell, because her voice is projected in such a way that I could understand everything that she said. So she's a good example of how to speak through a mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the public?
Yes, Janine Mattern. Janine, did you have a question?
I did. I've noticed on the website about the K-8 Academy offering for the summer, I was informed that there is no cost to students who are going to be asked to take part, but yet we're still asking $125 from our high school students who may need a summer course in order to be promoted. Just wondering why the CARES Act money can't carry over to summer school for our high school students?
That's, CARES money could carry over for our high school students. That's our typical program that we run on an annual basis, whereas the K-8, we typically don't have a summer program. So we could go back and review what those fees are for the high school, because that would be covered on our CARES fund, should we choose to do this.
I can't really hear him. I don't know, I could hear someone speaking, is it?
That CARES money could cover our high school funds. I mean, that's our typical summer programming that we run on an annual basis, which is why those fees are there. Given the fact that K-8, we typically don't have a summer program, we were using Esser funds to cover those, but we can go back and review our high school summer program to make that considered under the Esser's funds as well.
That would be great if that would be looked at. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Mrs. Winchell, may I ask you one question? As we're talking about informational items. Is there any effort put into looking at what learning management software we're going to be utilizing for next academic year? Are we still looking at Google or have we begun a process of evaluating other platforms?
Great question. Anyone want to take that one?
We I can just start this. We did actually vet a couple LMSs and we couldn't find definitively one way or the other that we would benefit greatly by looking at one other than what we're currently doing via Google Classroom.
And we did just recently upgrade Google Classroom to give there's additional things and I couldn't name them all, but we did upgrade that to make it more effective for the use of our teachers.
Did that upgrade include links into Infinite Campus so that grades can upload directly in? Or is that a separate standalone app that the teachers would have to utilize?
That's something that when we discuss with our IT people that would not be prudent to do during the year to look at as a possibility for next year or this coming school year.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Are we looking to do that to help that grade transmission from one platform to another?
We're currently exploring how that will work, yes.
Yes, and our data applications team, that's working on that. We think the department is aware of that.
So as a district, we've evaluated and we've determined that the paid form of Google Classroom far exceeds any of the other platforms that you've evaluated.
We looked at it with the end user, yes. But the other products didn't bring any additional benefits, so we stayed with the same platform to make the ease of use for our end users, the parents, the students, the teachers.
If you wouldn't mind, what platforms?
Would we look at Schoology? We'll let you know specifics. I know Schoology was one and I can't remember the other ones, but we can share that at the next meeting.
And this review happened within the last six months?
Yes. Canvas was one. They're coming to me one at a time. I apologize.
Thank you.
So why do we think every other district around here took Schoology and we think Google Classroom is better? City did, Fairview, General McLean, Harbor Creek, all the big schools in Erie County took Schoology. Even the city in the summer made their teachers switch over from Google Classroom to Schoology. Why did they get it wrong and we got it right?
I'm not, I don't, I'm not going to say they got it wrong, but we thought what was the right fit for us was consistency for our end user.
Can you take a Google Classroom and take the exact class and reuse it the next quarter, just as it is?
You can archive your classroom. I'm not a hundred percent sure if you can just lift it over and use it over again.
Yeah, that's my difficulty. If we're going to actually catalog these courses and we're going to have a virtual school, if the teachers have to repost that stuff every single day. They might have the information on their Google Drive, but they have to repost it and repost it. Whereas if you have Schoology, with some people that are really good at Walnut Creek, use Schoology for social studies and science, and it really was a good experience when my children went through there. But you could catalog it and you can share a course with another teacher. You could, you know, share a course with somebody within another district. You know, we could go say, hey, you have this course catalog in Schoology, Erie City. We use the same textbook. Why can't we, you know, spend two hundred dollars and buy that from you, just like you buy textbooks? Just a thought. That's a good point, Mike. I forgot all about.
We did have a number of teachers that we reached out to that were familiar with both platforms, specific to Schoology. And we had them evaluate benefits, pros and cons of each, and they were just as comfortable using the Google Classroom part of it. Like I said, we couldn't find a definitive push that would really justify the added expense part of Schoology. Couldn't, we were relying heavily on what those teachers that were, that did know both platforms pretty well. We were going with, that was part of the input that we received in that process and that was, we thought that was very valuable.
So when you talk about end user acceptance, how do you come to that conclusion? Did we evaluate? Did we survey our students? Did we ask them for their input? Did we talk to parents that are K to five and their frustrations or their enjoyment of using the platform? I mean, how did we, how do we justify end user satisfaction?
We didn't officially survey. That was the feedback we got from the, as Dr. Stoops said, the teachers that we talked to. They reached out to colleagues. I did reach out to teachers in other districts who spoke not very favorably of switching to Schoology from Google Classroom, just as an example, so you're not going to get a hundred percent anyone selling either. Actually, the people I talked to in Erie City were not very happy that they were forced to switch at the last minute and it didn't go very well for them.
And our virtual students that were pure virtual this year with our pure virtual teachers, they are satisfied with the Google platform, knowing that we may be considering a virtual component moving forward, that that is what we want to build from. This is the year we build.
I've worked with the K five. I have not gotten any complaints regarding Google Classroom.
I would really recommend you reach out to some parents because I can tell you it is not super user-friendly.
Would you be able to gather a little bit of that information for us? The different platforms that you did look at and give us a little bit of information related to what went into that decision-making? And I would recommend that if there are parents in the listening audience, teachers in the listening audience that would like to give their input on Google Classroom, please reach out to us. Reach out to MEC and give us your input now when decisions like that are being made.
Board, to ensure that we have at least parent input, even looking at the participation tonight, we may not have a lot of parents who are privy to this conversation, so we will probably do a brief survey. We know that our stakeholders are probably all surveyed out at this point, but this is critical information. We want to have their input as we're considering a virtual or cyber program for next year. So we'll have a brief survey of it, just a few questions to get your input.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me, Mrs. Winchell. I believe that Mrs. Mattern has another question.
Okay, great.
Janine, did you have another question?
Yes, it's, well, it's more of an observation to piggyback off of Mr. Linder. Google Classroom, because my son is a hundred percent virtual, he's a sophomore at the high school. Depending on the class, the platform is conducive for what they need to do. One of the big problems we run into is there's many extensions some teachers use. So Kami being one of them, because you can't edit a PDF within Google Classroom. You have down, to download another extension, edit it, upload. It adds extra steps. I think if we could find a way to streamline it where there's not these extra extensions you have to download and not have to then upload and turn in, that might make it a little bit, as he mentioned, user-friendly. But for like a virtual phys ed class, it's very, it's very user-friendly. I think it almost needs to be looked at in puzzle pieces on what particular class can use it without issue, where others might need to look at something else.
Thank you. Um, just one more item. I believe for this year, we had some teachers. Mr. Dean, you mentioned a couple of them that had asked to have a license for Schoology because that was what they preferred. Will we continue to do that for individual teachers that prefer Schoology?
The secondary teachers that we interacted with that were using Schoology still have all since converted to Google Classroom as their platform. So they, we didn't have anybody that was really that beholden to Schoology that they wished to continue it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other items to discuss? I'd like to move to six point zero one and make a motion to adjourn the Instruction and Student Services meeting. Do you have a second?
Second, Rick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Finance and Operations Committee. Mr. Linder.
Thank you, Mr. Winchell. Mrs. Sitter, can you have roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
And Mr. Winchell.
Here.
First item we have is one point oh two, approval of agenda. I'd like to bring that forward as a motion, and I have a second, please.
A second, Winchell.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item two point oh one, Finance and Operation Committee Meeting Minutes of March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to bring those forward as a motion.
Second, John.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We have a lengthy agenda this evening. We have fourteen items, but we will start with the most important. Mr. O'Toole, if you will please provide us with a budget review this evening?
So tonight, we're going to be presenting our proposed final budget. And then in May, we will present our proposed final, or our final budget for which will be enacted for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. A lot of these slides are going to be familiar. I tried to summarize everything that we presented from January up until this point in time, as well as the revised numbers that are presented in our budget for approval by the committee tonight. As you can see here, this slide is familiar with the PSBA State of Education Report. And the primary driver to this slide is the mandated costs from our state. You have growing, you have growing charter school payments. We have growing charter, or special ed payments. And you have growing pension costs, as you can see at the graph at the bottom there, from left to right. Those are our three primary drivers as well. You can see the growth over the last four years. And these are mandated costs. We can't control these costs. As we move on to the following slide, revenue shares vary widely across the state of Pennsylvania. So this shows every school district in the state of Pennsylvania. The darker the orange color is, is the more state funding they receive, up to eighty percent. The darker the purple is, the more local funding districts rely on, up to eighty percent. If you focus up in Erie County in the top left-hand corner of that slide, you can see that Fairview and Mill Creek are purple. Everyone else around us are about fifty percent total funded by the state, all the way closer to eighty percent. And we'll explain why that is here in a little while. This slide shows the growth in mandated expenses driving spending increases on an annual basis. So the graph down in the bottom left there shows the last ten years. The orange line represents our pension costs, which have grown over six hundred and twenty-seven percent in the past ten years. The dark purple line represents tuition costs over the last ten years, which is with a growth of a hundred and ninety-three percent. And the light purple line represents special education cost growth over the last decade at sixty-five percent. Again, all three of these costs are state-mandated. So if we take a look at our budget and history comparison here, so what have we done to control our budget over the last eight years or so? From a revenue standpoint, we've brokered pilot agreements with Lecon to generate about two hundred and forty-one thousand annually. We settled a Wegmans assessment value case that generates roughly two hundred and fifty thousand annually with a one-time payment of about a million dollars. We continue to challenge low assessed properties to the point where our assessed value has increased over the past seven years of a hundred to over a hundred and twenty-four million, which is generating about one point eight million dollars in taxes for this upcoming year. We're putting our assets to work, whether we're selling it or leasing buildings. As you can see in the slide, we sold Asbury Nature Center for about one point five million, Bernandale for nine hundred thousand. We're currently leasing Mill Creek Learning Center for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually. We, our cash balances, we're investing. Currently, the market is rather low. But prior to last year, we generated over seven hundred thousand dollars in investment income. We continue to look at our state and federal subsidies that are based on reimbursements to maximize those. We've generated a couple hundred thousand dollars more annually as we continue to maximize those state and federal reimbursements. From an expenditure standpoint, how have we controlled our expenditures over the past eight years? As you can see here, from two thousand thirteen to the present time, we've closed buildings. We've closed programs, Montessori or the North Coast School. We've eliminated positions, the central office director and other technical support positions. The total positions eliminated since two thousand thirteen, about thirty-three professional positions. And support staff's been reduced by about thirty-four positions and twenty-one part-time positions. We continue to negotiate our rates when it comes to banking services or liability insurance, utilities, internet, to saving about two hundred and ten thousand dollars in. So this is the criteria I use to find comparable districts. The criteria is free and reduced rate between forty and forty-eight percent. A student count above three thousand, below eleven thousand five hundred. And that shows you a few of the districts that are within those twenty-two. The purpose of providing this is, this is the criteria that drives this slide. This is a line graph showing from two thousand ten to two thousand nineteen, our total local revenue per student. The black line represents common districts, for which the criteria I just presented is driving. The green line represents the state average. The red line represents Mill Creek. And the gray line represents the IU average. So this is our total local revenue per student. As you can see, we're about the average, the state average. We're much below the common districts and we're well above the IU average. I just showed the PSBA slide saying that we rely heavily on our local resources compared to most districts around us. So that makes sense for why we're much higher than the IU average because we're forced to rely on our local resources as compared to the state subsidies that they do. What drives a majority of our local revenue? It's our real estate taxes, and we'll talk about that a little bit more detail. But a big component to measuring what our tax rate is compared to everybody else is an equalized mill. An equalized mill basically states if everybody's home was a hundred thousand dollars in every district, where does your tax rate stack up? As you can see here, the green line shows where Mill Creek's equalized mill tax rate is compared to our comparable districts. We're towards the bottom. What's our equalized mill in comparison to all those within IU five? We're about middle of the range, below average. But we're in the middle. This is a slide showing our actual tax rate. Mill Creek is about fourteen point five mills, which is shown about five to the right. It's in the middle of the road. So why do we receive less state funding? We've already shown that we rely heavily on our local resources as compared to specifically the other districts in the IU five, but why is that? Well, if you look at our market value personal income aid ratio, this is basically taking a district's total market value, your assessed value of your properties, divided by the personal income, which is based on state tax returns. And it gives you a ratio. The lower the ratio number, the wealthier the state perceives that district to be. As you can see at the top, again, gray is the IU five average. It's much higher compared to other common districts compared to us in the black line or ourselves at, with the red line, which helps explain why this, other districts within the IU five are receiving more state subsidy than we are because the state perceives them to need it. They can't afford it, unlike Mill Creek. This is, this slide here just shows what total revenue is per student, as I just explained. The IU five average is much higher than Mill Creek, higher than the state average, and higher than our common districts. So where does that take us for a total revenue per student? As we just explained, our tax rate's rather low when you're talking about even compared to IU5 districts. It's low when you're talking about districts that are funded commonly compared to us. So that means we generate less revenue per student because we receive less state funding as well compared to all these other districts. So let's flip on the other side of this equation. Let's talk about expenditures here real quick. I summarized this in one slide. We've already gone through our expenditures in the past, a couple of presentations. As we generate less revenue per student, we spend less per student.
And if I can just ask one question for our public out there. Can you explain what function 4,000 and 5,000, or function 9,000 for those that are not familiar with the budgeting structure?
Yeah, so this total expenditures per student is, we basically took out debt payments. So you're talking about all support services, all instruction, all extracurriculars. It's pretty much remove, it is, not pretty much, it is removing your debt payments or your capital projects transfers. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, just in case they weren't aware what those numbers meant.
So we rely heavily, our staffing drives a lot of our costs. And this isn't our enrollment versus staffing trend over the last 10 years or so that, yeah, the orange line represents our enrollment trend. The blue line represents our staff. The primary purpose of showing this slide is we've been adjusting our staffing with declining enrollment. We do expect increasing enrollment. We've experienced increasing enrollment over the last two years. And we're most likely going to need to adjust our staffing accordingly as well. That takes us into where our current budget is. This is the same format I used the last presentation or two. If you look down the left-hand side, you'll see the title or description of that account or that line item. The right column shows where we ended 1920 school year based on our audited financials. The 2021 budget versus the 2022 budget. And that variance is the 2022 budget versus the 2021 budget and a percentage variance. So our real estate taxes are up about $1.6 million compared to the prior year. Why is that? Well, we, our assessed values increased by about $14 million. We experienced a higher collection rate than we have, so I improved that by about a half a percent. And this budget does include a tax increase of 1.8%. That's half the index. As you move down, some of the other material items is our real estate transfer tax, as well as our earned income tax. I did increase by 450,000 in total. COVID didn't impact those line items as much as we anticipated. And then earnings on our earnings, we do expect a rebound as well on our investments. And then the other local revenue is a reduction in our overhead and rental costs. Moving on to state revenue, it's relatively flat compared to the prior year. I mean, our social security is up about 45,000. That's driven based on salaries. As salaries continue to increase, your social security Medicare is a percentage of those. As will that, we get reimbursed half from the state. The same concept exists for the bottom line, the state share of retirement contribution. So we have a total budget of about $32.4 million for our state revenue. Our federal another, we have a total budget of about 2.8 million. Our title money is flat from the prior year. We increase, we're showing a cost or revenue of about 460,000 for our SRS funds. Again, that money just nets to zero as the offset will be in expenditures. And we have an increase in our access funding of about 75,000 as we continue to improve those reimbursements. Showing this in terms of a bar graph, I mean, we're relatively flat year over year. We're just over, we're actually slightly above where we are for our 2021 budget. And we do have a tax increase of 1.8%. So let's take a look at this in a pie chart. Again, we just talked a lot about how we rely heavily on our local resources, for which is primarily driven by our real estate taxes. 53% of our total budget is driven by our local real estate taxes. And we are in a different situation than most districts in IU5 because we are forced to rely on our local resources, unlike the others who do receive more state reimbursement. Our total revenue is followed by 7% in earned income tax, 6% other local revenue, 14% is driven by our basic ed subsidy, 4% by our special ed. Other state reimbursement is 13% of our budget. And what I mean by that is your social security Medicare reimbursement, your PISers, your transportation contract. You have to spend money in order to receive that reimbursement. And 2% total budget of federal. As we take a look at our salaries. Again, this is the same concept that we had with our revenue with 1920 being based on our audited financials. You have our current budget versus our projected budget for next fiscal year in the variance. Our total expenditures come in about 42.45.2 million. And you can see I have the explanation. So there's about $407,000 increase in our administrative line item. That's represented by a 2% increase, the additional three admin officers and a director of HR. Our next line item is our teachers slash LOA. That's represented by a 2.4% increase. We added an autistic teacher. You know, we're removing three other positions, and there was a savings from 10 retirements. Continue down is our secretary and classified agreements. They also receive a 2% increase. We had an executive assistant, an IT position, or a professional development position for which is funded by our SRS funds. And moving to the end is our educational assistance. You have $153,000 variance compared to the current budget. That's driven by a 2% raise. We added three ESL aides, two autistic aides, and two other federally funded aides. Moving on to benefits, clearly your PISers and your FIC line. Again, it's a percentage of your total salaries. As your salaries increase, these line items will as well. And the other big highlight to have here is our healthcare. It's relatively flat from the prior year. We've been trending that way for the entire year. So I think it's only appropriate for us to budget relatively flat for the upcoming year. Our remaining expenses. If we start at the top, our total contracted services, we do, we reduce that line item, really for a reduced in sub-costs. Our property services, we added our IT lease. Now that variance of 354,000 will be offset by the equipment costs down below. As we typically, for equipment, we would buy our IT equipment outright. That was about $1.2 million in total. If we lease that over three years, it's $400,000 on an annual basis. Our other services is increased by 600,000. That's driven by our transportation contract up about 119,000, outside tuition by over 300,000. You know, I did reduce our cyber overall cost from what it would be projected by a half a million dollars as we expect to recruit these students back in this upcoming year. Supplies and utilities, it is reduced by $394,000. As we continue to invest into our buildings, we're seeing energy consumption is much improved, as well as less work orders. And then the equipment line item I just talked about a little bit. It takes us down to our debt, which is all our payment for our current existing debt.
Aaron, for the IT purchases or for the leases, are we going to renew technology sooner? Being that we're leasing this equipment? Will we turn over technology every three years rather than buy something and save it for 10?
No, I mean, we already had a replacement plan that would have been the same cycle. So in terms of timing, it wouldn't have impacted. Really what we're doing is putting our cat, we're letting our money work better for us in terms of making more on investment income as compared to paying an interest.
So it's still a wash.
It is. So this is a column graph here where we're just showing 1920 versus 2021 and 2122. It's relatively flat compared to the prior year. The big slide here is this pie chart. So you know, about 73% of our total expenditures is made up of salary and benefits, which makes sense. We're in the service industry. But that's where our material money is, as well as we control less than 6% of our budget on an annual basis. Most of our, our service, we have contracts for transportation. We have contracts related to our employment. We don't control very much of our budget on an annual basis or our debt issuance. So that takes us to our surplus or deficit. Audited, we had a little over $2 million for 1920 is where we ended. Our current fiscal budget, we talked about our forecast last time. We can use some SRS money to address that deficit. And then our projected budget for next year is a little over $100,000 net that we would use fund balance to help balance the remaining. So 1.8% tax increase with using fund balance to balance the remaining amount. This shows our fund balance of where we currently are as of the end of last fiscal year. The specific line item in here that we would use to balance our budget this current year is our assigned salary and benefits. We have just under $3.2 million available to use. The board last, our last presentation, the board had asked about some balancing options. And that's what we put together here is our balancing options. If the board should choose to elect any of this, it would reduce our expenditure lines as it currently exists in the proposed final budget. So for example, looking at an autistic teacher, we would reduce that, our total expenditures by $186,000 should the board want to move forward with any of these balancing options. As you can see on the left-hand side, it shows a description of what those are. On the right-hand side, I provided an amount. Our administrative officers are about 373,000. ESL aides, about 65,000. Autistic teacher and aides, 186. We could remove or replace placement of IT assets altogether. That'd be 450,000. Try to provide a couple other examples that we could use. We eliminated field trips. We generate a little less than $50,000 savings. Cut supplies by 10%. That'd be about $140,000 savings. And then I want to show some more drastic models here, just to show from each side. We could eliminate transportation. It's not realistic, but that would show about 4.7 million. Change our middle school model, 1.6 million savings. Change our high school model, 2.2 million savings. What we are doing right now, which we can't quantify at this moment in time, but we're reviewing our transportation routes. To try to eliminate those, a number of routes that would provide a savings. And then we're also looking at a healthcare auditing service for next year to help with our high shock claims and audit those to make sure that they're being charged appropriately. So we are consistently looking at our expenditures, as we talked about, and we have been over the last eight years. But these are some of the options that we put together for the board should they choose to reduce our budget expenditures further than what they exist now. And then in conclusion, the board also had asked for an SRS funding plan. This is a draft plan. As you can see on the left-hand side, again, we have our total, or our description, and then the estimated cost out for the next three years. This SRS money does run until 2024. So as we move down the left-hand side here, we're looking at adding an interventionals at each building. See that will cost about $865,000 a year. We discussed earlier in this meeting our K through 8 summer program. That's going to roughly cost about 106,000. We're looking to add four mental health therapists, two at the middle school, two at the elementary school. That'll be about $200,000 annually. Looking to add a couple positions, pandemic coordinator, our professional development position that we discussed. That would be about $460,000 annually. A few other curriculum resources, that would be about 100,000. Professional development, $300,000 annually. We have our custodial supplies, as we're still going to have to sanitize. Expect to have to sanitize over the next couple of years. And then the remaining amount, we would look to use for our virtual program, curriculum resources. Any, looking to bid out IT equipment, and then maybe part of our renovations HVAC equipment.
I know normally we'd go through a lot of things, but I'd like to stop and pause here and let's, let's ask questions about the budget before we move through the rest of the items. That would probably be.
That works. So Aaron, so April 1st, I think you first delivered the initial preliminary budget and showed going to the index and structural deficit. I know that's when we asked you to come back with eliminated structural. So can you share with the board and with the viewing audience, listening audience, how we got from the 3.6 to your position today of the 1.8?
Yes, thank you. That's important. I forgot to mention that is, you know, what the big change was from the last time was issuing debt. We're looking to push that debt issuance back a year. So that saved about a million dollars overall. We discussed a lot of time, we don't need the cash that early. So it would be really, really based on the market, on what would be the most beneficial for us when to issue that debt. So that was one big item that we moved. And then there was the savings for our retirement. Our, everything was due on the, at the end of March. So we wouldn't know, we didn't know what the savings was. We didn't know how many retirements we would have had to make those adjustments. I know that we talked a lot, or the, you know, Mr. Linder and Mr. President Winchell, we talked a lot about different options to balance that. And this is the outcome of where we came, which was pushing the debt back, taking advantage of the retirement savings. Those are the two material items. I will say, I mean, we have some other items that we're still waiting on finalized pricing for. It shouldn't materially impact the budget as it currently exists.
So the 1.8%, how much revenue would that generate for us? I know you combined that with a couple of other things in that one slide with the reassessments and.
Yeah.
Your 1.5.
So we're looking about 1.6 million. It was probably about 1.2 million, I would say, the 1.8% generated.
So we eliminated 1.2, 1.2% of the tax increase.
Yes.
Which is equivalent to, if I just did the math in half of last time, it's about $26 per 100,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Quick question, Aaron. You're still looking at a $100,000 deficit.
That's correct.
What would be, what would, what increase would there be necessary to eliminate 100,000? So if we went from 1.8 to 2%. I guess I'm looking at down the road, the deficit tends to.
Compound over time.
Compound over time, exactly. So what we're doing is trying to, we're just pushing that deficit down the road, which is going to be even larger next time we look at it. So if we went from 1.8, what would it take to eliminate and balance at least it out to no deficit?
It'd be roughly 1.9. It'd be in between 1.8 to 1.9.
Which would be only a few dollars more per household, I guess. Rather than compounding our deficit issue down the road, let's deal with it today.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't disagree with you. I would prefer a structurally balanced budget. But in the grand scheme of, what are we looking, $110 million? $100,000 is essentially a balanced budget in the grand scheme of the total. I mean, you could, you could just easily end up $100,000 positive at the end of the year.
We could.
Or $200, $300,000 on the other side of that.
I mean, you could, that change could happen in healthcare alone. I mean, you're talking about an over $10 million line item for which we're self-insured. So yeah, there's, it's a fraction of a percent when you're talking about the total budget.
I did have a couple of questions. I mean, obviously, some of these balancing options are very extreme and unpalatable, such as eliminating transportation. But what exactly does changing middle school and high school model mean?
I would need some help with that one.
Yeah, so that would be a very drastic change to what we currently do. That would mean that we would be taking the next year and evaluating, moving away from utilizing the middle school philosophy, where you currently have teachers in every content area on every team. If you talk about the high school model, you would be looking at moving. If you talk about the high school model, you would be looking at moving away from intensive block schedule to more of a six or seven period day schedule. So those would be drastically impacting our students. So while the number is attractive in terms of a potential saving, that's a direct impact to students and their learning environment, which is, you know, why, you know, it would not be something that we would recommend at this time, but we were asked to look at all potential options for savings.
I appreciate that. I just, I want to make sure that we're clear on what that means so that the general public doesn't say, why wouldn't you take that option? It'll be a disservice to our students education.
It would absolutely be a complete disruption to the instructional model that we use and believe is best for our students, and it would impact all of our students at those grade levels.
And that model works extremely well. I mean, my child went through there and it runs very well.
Absolutely. I am not suggesting changing it. I just want to make sure that when people see that in the presentation, they don't say, why wouldn't they consider this?
Yeah, and I agree with you 100%, but when they get kids in the middle school, they'll know.
I've spent a great deal of my professional life in the middle school and I absolutely would not support any change to changing the middle school model. In fact, what this pandemic has done is draw us a little farther away from it. We need to move closer back to that, but it is an extremely effective model and worth every penny of that.
I think any of these balancing options would be a tough, a tough sell, honestly. Aaron, you, you mentioned that part of saving money would be to eliminate the debt service for another year.
That's one of the, that's what I did.
One of the options.
Delayed it, the issuance of the new debt for the future renovations.
And, and how does that affect our schedule for that, for the renovations and also the cost, as we've seen here recently with the increase in materials and things? If we delayed a year, I mean, are we going to pay it on the backend?
It doesn't impact our schedule. We're talking cash flow at that point in time. And then we still have the option is should the market be attractive to us to, I'll just say, issue the debt a year from now? I mean, we could do a budget amendment and just make that first payment, take it out of our fund balance if we needed to, because we already know that we're going to have to make up that debt payment in next year's budget. So we still have the options of issuing the debt on a timely basis should we want to do so. But because of the cash flow, the way that that worked out for our projects, we don't have to issue it in this upcoming fiscal year.
Yeah, John, I think that's one of the things Mike and I talked to Aaron about. It's not necessarily a delay of a whole year. If you think about, as Aaron said, the fiscal year, right? Initially, he thought about January of '22, but that could even get delayed till July of '22. That puts you in the next tax year. And even a coupon on those first bonds, maybe a short coupon, that may even be deferred in another six months. You have to pay even your first interest. So it's just not really a year, but just transferring into the next fiscal.
And it doesn't change the construction schedule?
Doesn't change the construction schedule at all.
Okay.
The only difference it does for the budget is rather than next year making up half of whatever an annual payment would be in your structural budget, you're making up the entire annual amount. And I'm speaking next year as a '22, '23 budget.
Well, at some point it's going to come into the picture.
Right, correct.
One of the other cost savings that you had in there or that was taken was an elimination of three teachers. Where did that come from or what, what impact does that have on our students?
The impact on the students, I would look to someone else to be able to answer that a little bit, but in terms of where did that come from is our enrollment in certain classes. It wasn't there to support the staffing that we had.
So we didn't eliminate like a subject matter. We condensed from a, a six round to a five round because of enrollment numbers. So there will be no loss of any type of educational diversity of subject matter.
And just to reiterate, as, as we think about, you know, our options that are being shared right now around balancing the budget, and then I've heard several, several of you echo that the last place we are going to consider is anything that directly impacts students or instructional program. And so if I may respectfully submit, and certainly I think you all are aligned with this thinking, we are not touching, eliminating teacher positions or anything that will impact student academic outcomes.
And the only thing I'd like to just clarify, so on this last slide you showed us with the SRS funding, this is a net zero impact on our budget because these funds are coming from federal government. These positions that are associated with this are anticipated to sunset and that we have restrictions on what we can and cannot use SRS funds on. So if the general public says, why didn't you spend, you know, X number millions on this, we do have certain restrictions that stop us from impacting our structural budget.
That's correct. So it is not, any SRS money that we would spend is a net zero impacted. Basically, to summarize it a different way, it does not require a tax increase to fund any of this. I mean, it is all federally funded and would sunset. Therefore, you don't have it in your structural deficit moving forward.
And it's not going to occur after three years additional debt for us.
Correct.
Right? Everything stops.
Correct.
At least gets reevaluated at the end of this.
Correct.
Yeah, I do like the option that last with the IT equipment renovations, you know, keeping an open window on that. Obviously, we want those Easter funds to be used for education and things like that, the slide, but I do like the opportunity to keep that where appropriate, use that for ventilation, HVAC as part of the projects too.
And this is a ongoing list, correct?
It is. This is a draft.
Partial sum of the SRS funds that the district will receive. So when the public says Mill Creek received 13 and a half million dollars.
Correct.
Over the four years, this is the first five and a half million that we have planned plus what we have used already in this past year.
I mean, we've already received probably about 1.4 million. I've written two different grants through the state that was SRS money that we use for our safety equipment, paying for the pandemic coordinator. We've used SRS one, the first million dollars that came through in terms of resources for curriculum that was needed because of virtual. We've used it for our shields and other safety measures that we put in place to be able to return to school in person.
So I have a question, Dr. Rob, just outside the box, right? So this is, someone actually kind of brought this my attention. I'm just wondering, you know, in the past, we've talked about grant writers, right? So is there an opportunity to use any of this for, with the sunset provision of a grant writer trying to pursue additional type of funding for these type of COVID slide opportunities?
I would have to go back and look at that, that off the top. If I had to answer right now, I'd say no, but I would have to look at the requirements.
Just trying to think outside the box a little bit, you know? To think about that to kind of propel that, maybe there's more out there for technology or, you know?
Yeah.
Things like that. So, okay.
Aaron, for the professional development, what's the philosophy there? Are we bringing people in and spending that money or do we plan to pay people to actually get trained?
It's a combination. I'll let the team speak on behalf of that one.
Yeah, we plan to use both our own experts by paying them to share their expertise with others as well as some outside experts depending on the topic.
Just if I could add too, it's also sending our teachers to high-quality professional development and then bringing that back as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. The SRS fund essentially is aligned to, our use of it will certainly appear to be incredibly aggressive around becoming innovative and creative in how we utilize in the funds as we think about the impact on our instructional program. It's aligned to free, what we call mission critical ideas. One, it's the district's three-year strategic instructional plan. And under this plan and in alignment with the superintendent's goals around professional development, we are incredibly confident that this three-pronged approach of one, developing principles and assistant principles capacity as instructional leaders, two, really add in instructional positions that will support not only alleviating learning loss, but really building capacity in those individuals who are leading our schools so that they can continue to focus in the instructional core. By adding the administrative offices that we see as one of the options, this will remove all of our non-instructional responsibilities from sort of the daily operation responsibilities, I should say, from principals so that they can spend up to about 70% of their time on the instructional core. And that is looking at student outcomes, teacher practice, and of course, the pedagogical delivery around rigorous content. And then the third is just to really have a focus and targeted and differentiated teacher support and development, exactly what Mr. Orlando just spoke to in grades K through 12. The second thing is for us to think about is the second mission critical area is as we, we are continuously revisiting our organizational chart and looking at resource allocation. And in this case, the resource that we're focused on are, are human resources to make sure that, you know, again, we're putting the right people, not to belabel again, Jim Collins and Good to Great, putting the right people in the right seats on this instructional bus that we're thinking about. And then the third is plan to just not only mitigate learning loss, which is essentially what SRS is really grounded in. You know, the federal government's guidance is that we should spend up to about 20% of the funds to mitigate learning loss, but we are also taking on the responsibility of accelerating those students who are doing well, who have done well, both instructionally and socio-emotionally. So we're excited about what we will be able to do with the funds in this year's act as we continue to strategically plan for three years out.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Toole on the budget?
Thank you.
So I would like to bring item 3.01, the proposed final budget to the board for approval. I got the whole big thing to read here. So the Finance and Operations Committee recommends the approval of the proposed final general fund budget resolution and recommendation. Resolution that the 2021, 2022 Mill Creek Township School District proposed final general fund budget be adopted as follows. A, 2021 slash 2022 general fund budget be approved with revenues in the amount of $104,335,600 and expenses in the amount of $104,443,086. The following taxes to be adopted, be it resolved at the 2021, 2022 taxes are set forth as follows. Tax authority rate, real estate tax, public school code, 14.7613 Mills. Earned income tax act, 511 at 0.5%. Real estate transfer tax act, 511 at 0.5%. Occupational privilege and local services tax act, 511 at $5. Mechanical device tax act, 511 at $125. Said budget is available for public inspection in the Mill Creek Education Center of the Mill Creek Township District, 3740 West 26th Street, Erie PA 16506. The school district shall make the proposal, proposed final budget in its then current form available for public inspection at least 20 days before the date scheduled for adoption on final budget. At least 10 days before the date scheduled for the final budget, the school district shall advertise a final budget notice. Such aforementioned action is taken pursuant to the provision of the public school code as amended January 1971. Proposed final budget is available on the district's website, www.mtsd.org, or is on display at the Mill Creek Education Center, 3740 West 26th Street, Erie PA 16506, during normal business hours. The board will adopt the final budget on May 24th, 2021 at 7:00 PM at the Mill Creek Education Center, 3740 West 26th Street, Erie PA 16506. I'd like to bring that forward as a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
The proposed budget as far as being public will not be until after our regular board meeting, which we approved that, correct him?
That's the typical way you do it. You're, you're just, the motion that you just read is to bring it forward to the board as the committee.
Right.
And so it's not the final document for the board.
Right. So once we approve the final.
Then we'll leave this one thing again.
Then it'll go public. Correct. Okay.
So I got a good practice run.
Yeah.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's the easier part of the, tonight. We have additional 13 items that I would like to bring forward in one block. And as we move through, I may ask Mr. O'Toole or Mr. Gallagher to explain a little bit as we get through these. 3.02 is student accident insurance renewal for 2021, 2022.
By school code, we need to offer student accident insurance on an annual basis, and this is just our renewal to do so.
Thank you. Item 3.03 Allegheny Health Network medically related contracting agreement and statement of work.
This is a part of our wellness plan that we offer to our employees where St. Vincent brings their RV and we'll have a diagnostic screening done. They'll have their blood work taken right on the site. You can see the scope of work. There's multiple different dates at each building. So we provide ample time.
Thank you. Item 3.04 is a Title I service agreement with Port LeBeuf District for 2020, 2021. 3.05 is Title I service agreement with the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit for 2020, 21. 3.06 is the Student Activity Account Officers for 2021. That involves an update to the Math Club Officers at McDowell, Vox Literacy Magazine Officers for MIHS, and JS Wilson Updated Yearbook Officers. 3.07 is the exoneration of delinquent trailer property taxes, and if you'd like to explain.
Yeah, again, as you see these from time and time again, the county is asking us to exonerate taxes for certain properties that really don't have much on the tax rolls therefore that they can unload those properties or resell those properties.
Most of them are for abandoned trailers that are no longer on the property. So the tax is on the trailer itself.
3.08 is the Counts Payable Report for the month of March, which also includes the payroll report. 3.09 is Ridgefield Elementary School Structural Window Replacement Agreement with HRLC Architects.
Yeah, so there's some windows at Ridgefield that haven't been replaced since the building was put in, and that's because they're actually put into the structure. So we went to, we were going to replace them this year and then we determined that we're going to actually have to hire an architect and an engineer to look at that. So this is the proposal to get this done so that we can do that design to be able to replace those windows next year. They're in pretty bad shape. The other windows at Ridgefield were replaced back in 2014, 15, but these ones weren't touched at that time.
3.10 is the steel, steel door replacement bid for the district-wide for all of our buildings. 3.11 is the aluminum door replacement bid, district-wide again. 3.12 is pavement concrete replacement bid, district-wide. 3.13 is free removal, district-wide bid. And 3.14 is the painting project bid specifically for Grandview Elementary School. I'd like to bring 3.02 through 3.14 forward as a motion. I have a second.
Second, Gary.
Discussion.
Seemed to be a big discrepancy in the aluminum door bid.
I'll tell you the.
I'm sure you reviewed it with both contractors.
In all of the bids, there's many of the bids, there's some big discrepancies.
Okay.
I know, I don't understand.
It is what it is. Good for us.
So do we have any feedback on why the discrepancy is so large? I mean, I know specifically on steel doors, it's interesting.
For the most part, the low one is actually the group that helped us put it together. Now, again, I still captured all of the information they had. They were all at pre-bid meetings. We went through site visits. That was even for the concrete pavement. We actually went out, they requested that we spray painted the actual area we wanted done, so we went out and did that. I mean, I feel, I do feel confident since it was the group that kind of helped us put all the information together that they know what they're doing because I had the most conversations with them. I can't really make heads or tails of why it's such a big difference with, with all of them, so.
In most of them, I'm, I'm not concerned. They're all reputable. In most of them, I'm I'm not concerned, they're all reputable companies that are local and have done work for us in the past that are quality. It's just very surprising to see such a such a drastic swing.
I know.
For some of them. One of the questions I did have was for the steel door replacement, how many doors were we replacing?
It was about ten or twelve doors, I believe, and some of them were double doors. I have it down as Bell Valley, Chestnut Hill, Westlake, and Tracy. And it was a combination of different doors there that are in dire need of getting replaced.
And then when we talk about tree removal, how do we determine which trees? I mean, obviously, the ones that are on the buildings, that's pretty easy, that need to be trimmed. But how do we determine which trees are to be removed?
So our groundskeeper, he he knows that kind of stuff, he went to training for that stuff. And so they, and then also the, you know, we'll get calls about limbs and stuff like that. And so, yeah, they're going to pull back some of the branches, especially the ones that are starting to hang over the road. You know, Tracy's one that's got a bunch of trees out front. And then a majority of the work, if you go through the bid packet, is just dead trees. There's a lot quite around Chestnut Hill, there's quite a few. And we didn't do this work last year, because honestly, we were about to do it, and then we realized that we were above the threshold. So we decided to just, we'll do a big bid for it this year, which is why there's so many for this year.
So we 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 depend on our grounds crew to complete the survey of our properties, and they.
Yes, and in fact, on top of that, they will also cut and manage trees. So these are the ones that they can't handle, that are above and beyond what we're capable of doing. So it's a, there's a lot of tree work that occurs every summer.
Are they planting trees?
Not right now, no. It is something we could look into. Again, it seems to be then an ongoing issue moving forward, but if that's something we want to look at, absolutely, we can, we can do that.
Valid question, I know typically, most institutions, as they remove a tree, they plant a tree.
I am thinking of Thirty-Eighth Street there, you know, when all those were cut down, we replaced them with something else. Might be worth looking at.
Yeah, you want me to look into that, we can, we can do that.
Definitely, because I believe that this bid has about fifty-eight trees in total that are being touched. I know that's not all fifty-eight are being removed, I want to say it's closer to like.
And I will say, we are not removing, we're not removing a single tree that is not dead.
Correct, I mean, I know, I understand they're all safety issues.
Yes.
As a forebit, you know, with that many trees coming off our properties, it is going to change the feel of our campuses. Did have one last question on the painting bid in particular. The painting bid has two deduct alternates, are we intending to take either one?
We're intending to take, well, no, we're inti, no, we're not taking any of them, we want the the larger amount. The idea with that was to see, just in case we didn't estimate quite enough to be able to pull that back, because we're going to do all the trim work. It's going to look really good, we're doing everything over there, we're doing the the door trim for the exterior doors as well. So, no, we're planning on going the full amount and not taking either one of the deduct alternates.
Because the deduct definitely would have changed.
It would have, yes.
A little better, but.
Yes, and I do know the reason.
We're going to do everything, because.
I do know the reason for that one, they subcontracted out, and that's why the deduct alternate was so high.
Anyone else have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move these forward to the board meeting. Two. Item four point oh one, we don't have any other informational items this evening, other than the budget presentation. So, Ms. Sitter, do we have any questions from the public?
I don't see any hands raised. Mr. Eliot, do you have a question?
Yes, a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Is the PowerPoint presentation that Aaron presented on Board Docs or on the website tonight?
It'll be on Board Docs tomorrow.
It'll be on the Board Docs tomorrow, okay, so.
It'd also be on the YouTube-recorded video as well, that you could review and watch it there as well this evening, if you wanted.
No, I I was watching it as he was presenting it. But again, it was a flash. Question that I have, last year, at the at the fiscal year close, two thousand twenty, the district had two point eight million as excess over the expenditures versus income. When did that two point eight million dollars go?
Into our fund balance?
It didn't go anywhere else?
No, it went into the fund balance.
Okay, and so the fund balance was increased by two point eight million?
Assuming your number is correct, yes.
No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the the balance sheet on page fifty-five of the General Fund Budgetary Comparison Schedule for year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. There's a, there's a transfer out of two point three million dollars. Don't know where that went, it doesn't designate where it went. On the two point eight million, that's on the same sheet. I I don't, I'm I'm puzzled, I'm I'm really puzzled. Ken, okay, there's there's no response. How did you calculate the budget for extracurricular activities from last year of one point five million? That's on page seventeen of the balance sheet from June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. You may not be able to answer that, since you don't have the document in front of you, but that's something that you may want to look into. I I do have an issue, and you just discussed it, about the removal of trees. Is there any consideration as to whether you should be trimming the trees or tearing them down?
The package that we approved involves both trimming, pruning, and removal of completely dead trees. So it is a combination of all three services, and it is evaluated by tree as to what was necessary by the grounds crew.
Okay, well, you know, thank you, Mike, you're appreciated. The, one last question, has there ever been an assessment within the past, say, five to ten years, as to the comparison? Because Mr. O'Toole compares our school district with other school districts similar in maybe budget, I I don't know what the criteria was that he did that in the past, but was there any assessment evaluation as to the, both the salaries, the staffing, all the positions in the executive level of the school district? Has there ever been an evaluation comparing, and again, comparing us, Mill Creek Township, with other school districts that are comparable, as Mr. O'Toole would delineate?
We have done analysis showing our staffing ratios across multiple different employment groups that we have.
Okay, do you have that in writing, Mr. O'Toole?
I have an analysis, yes.
You have an analysis of all the school districts and how how the both the past administration and the present administration is addressing those issues?
I have an analysis, again, as of the ratios within certain categories. I don't recall what districts we compared it against, so that, I have that analysis.
Okay, so if I submit a right-to-know, I I would be able to receive all those analyses and assessments for the past five or ten years?
We would evaluate the right-to-know request, as we all always evaluate the right-to-know request, as to whether or not it's a school record, and whether you would be entitled to it, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Senate. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, I do know, just that Aaron has prepared and shared with the board in prior years, analysis, which, you know, basically talks the number of students, and a breakdown, number of students per teacher, number of students per administrator across the board, especially all the districts in IU five. You know, so that's kind of an apple-apples comparison also, so.
And that's probably on Board Docs, too, because he's presented that at several, several board meetings.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Do not see any other hands raised.
That, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Finance and Operations Committee.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yo. Okay, it is seven fifty, if we could take a ten-minute break and start the, move the whole meeting at eight o'clock.
Okay, let's go.
Good evening, and welcome to Monday, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, mid of the whole meeting for the Millcreek Township School District Board of Directors. This also is being streamed on YouTube and will be recorded this evening. Mr. Senator, give roll call, please.
Mr. Busco.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Dr. Lansberry.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Robert.
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
One point, thank you. One point zero two, an executive session was held April twelfth, two thousand twenty-one for the purpose of personnel, real estate, and security. One point zero three, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Chris, motion.
Second, Mike.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Against nay? Motion passes. Everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and just as all.
Item two, visitors. We have two speakers signed up for five minutes this evening.
One five minute, one three minute.
Oh, one five minute, one three, three minute. And of course, it's always open to anyone else who wants to speak, so. Mr. Senator, if we could have our speakers.
Okay, the first person we have is Mr. Aliotta. Mr. Aliotta?
Yes, I am here, thank you. My good evening, Board, Administration, parents, taxpayers, and candidates for the school board seats. Let me begin with a quote, "Lack of transparency results in distrust and deep sense of insecurity." That's from the Dalai Lama. Let me make my comments brief this evening. I would strongly suggest that all school board directors and candidates read Policy zero zero zero, the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation. One never knows when an elected or an appointed public official will be asked questions under oath on the functioning of their positions and their responsibilities and accountability to the taxpayer. Policy six oh one, Fiscal Objectives. The Board recognizes its responsibility to district taxpayers to ensure that public monies expended by the school district are utilized for delivery of the educational programs in a manner that mandates full value to the taxpayers and that adequate procedures and records are established to ensure that end. Policy zero zero five, Solicitor's Duties. The solicitor shall render a written opinion when requested to do so for the Board President and/or Superintendent. We know the former Board President didn't execute his duty to ask for a written legal opinion on a specific topic. Will the present Board President ask? From Policy zero zero seven, the district solicitor shall be responsible to review existing policy in light of board actions. How's that going? Policy zero zero three, Functions of the Board in the Legislative Attributes or Characteristics, to be answerable to the residents of the district on all school matters, that is financial, operational, and curricula. I must congratulate Mr. Dean's question to Mr. Senate at his, at the April twentieth, two thousand twenty board meeting was perfectly correct in accordance to the Sunshine Act and law. School Board Directors may want to revisit the law to get the right answer or call the Office of Open Records for their legal opinion on questions at public meetings, whether it is board policy or does it relate and in adherence to and conformance of the law? Here's a question for all school board directors, candidates, and the public throughout the Commonwealth. Do you, including taxpayers, believe the public has a right to have a written legal opinion as to whether it is legal to spend your tax money on contracts and legal issues? Wow. There are so many red flags. I thought I was in China's parade in Tiananmen Square celebrating freedom of speech. Okay, so I didn't take my full five minutes. Can I reserve the right to extend my comments at the next meeting?
No.
Just kidding, I didn't wait until I finished my sentence, Mr. Senate. Just kidding, I still have a sense of humor since we are all talking about China. Hey, guys and gals, thank you for the opportunity to provide my public comments this evening. Good night.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification in regard to Mr. Aliotta's statement concerning the actions of Mr. Placido, that he didn't complete his duties, that's probably factually and legally inaccurate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, the second person who wanted to speak for three minutes is Carrie Knott. Carrie Knott, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Knott, and my daughter Callie is a senior on the track and field team. I am here to bring attention to the injustice that's being handed to our athletes by being denied permission to attend two major invitationals, Baldwin and Butler, that McDowell has attended regularly in the past. We have been told that we are only allowed to attend events with four to five teams or less. I recognize it all comes down to the numbers, especially with there being over a hundred and seventy athletes on the team. But I want to make sure that you are all aware that at these particular meets, we are not required nor even allowed to take the entire team. These meets often have standards that have to be met to qualify, and then if you only take the top athletes whose previous performances show that they would have a chance in being in the top eight, which is your meddling athletes, you greatly reduce those numbers. For example, in two thousand nineteen, because the two thousand twenty season was canceled, we only took seven athletes to the Baldwin Invitational. Two of them ended up meddling, and those were the same two that were our only state qualifiers. If you take our results from our first meet this past Saturday and compare them to the average from the two thousand twenty meets that we attended, those invitationals, that would be approximately less than ten of our athletes. The atmosphere energy in competition at these larger invites is palpable. I believe that most athletes rise to the level of their competitor. They perform better when they are pushed by their peers. We simply do not have that same level of competition locally as we would face at those particular invites. This was blatantly evident this past weekend for a few of our events, primarily pole vaulting, where Callie's winning height was four feet, three inches above any other non-McDowell competitor. In the past, when Callie was in eighth grade, there were some meets on the schedule that listed as parent-student participation only, meaning MTSD did not have any available coaching and/or transportation due to scheduling conflicts. But if a parent were able to get their student there, the district would register the athlete and provide any necessary equipment if possible. Why can't we do that for those meets? Are our athletes not worth it? By not allowing them to compete at this level, it is limiting their potential and even possibly costing some of those athletes thousands of dollars' worth of scholarship opportunities. This is an outdoor, no-contact sport at venues that are so widely spread out since they have so many events going on at completely different areas at the same time, unlike any of our other indoor or outdoor sports. Crowds are not limited to sitting in the stands, watching the athletes confined inside of the football field area. To be deprived of this opportunity to attend these invitationals for a second year in a row is simply unfair and unwarranted for these athletes that have dedicated countless hours to represent McDowell High School with honor.
Mrs. Doc, you please wrap it up. Your three minutes is up.
Yep, I'm done. I'll be emailing the copy of this to everybody, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Roberts, it's that, you know, Mark Becker, either now or later, make just a comment on that, whether it's now or other, under old, old business or something, have our A D make some comments.
Yeah, Mark, are you available to comment briefly?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the point. I appreciate the desire to have things back to normal. I do have a couple of points to share in relation to that, those comments. The athletic pandemic team at the beginning of the spring sports season discussed tournaments and invitationals for our spring sports, and it was decided at that time that we were going to remain consistent with what we've done all year and not participate in bigger tournaments, bigger invitationals. And while the general feeling is that we are moving in a positive direction with COVID nineteen, we are still seeing positive cases, and probably more importantly is the quarantining of our students and athletes. While we don't, and why I say more importantly is we don't see a big spread of the virus amongst athletes. We do, however, under the current practices and protocols of quarantining, we are seeing, you know, individual students, groups of students, and complete teams at times that are shut down, quarantined. With our district goal having always been keeping our students in face-to-face learning, keeping our student athletes competing, we feel that keeping our student athletes away from these, these larger invitationals where it's up to thirty teams, and, you know, she's exactly right, there are sometimes less participants per team. But we're talking about up to thirty teams from a larger, larger area. We felt, and again, talking with our pandemic athletic team and talking with Coach Joe Uhas, our head track and field coach, we felt the best chance to have our athletes have a complete season and to be able to be healthy and not quarantine and interrupt their, their training was to have more local meets and compete just at a smaller event as we did this past weekend. And basically, it comes down to our goal, keeping our kids face-to-face learning, keeping them competing, keeping the, the chance of a complete season and the ability to go to playoffs without this disruption of being quarantined. So, you know, again, I understand the, the desire to get back to normal, I desire, the desire to compete at the highest level. But, you know, that, that's how we came up with the decision.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm, Mark Becker, this is Janine McClintock. And I, I appreciate everything that you're saying. I do have a question for the seniors in particular that might be looking at scholarship opportunities. Is there any opportunity to allow them to go, like with their parents or something like that, so you have these, you have these kids that have missed out and are looking at scholarship opportunities? Is there any way we can assist our seniors to go to some of these more competitive meets that might help them with scholarship money?
I'm definitely not opposed to looking at that. And we could talk with, with the team again, talk with Coach Uhas again. You know, we'd have to look at the overall, you know, do we want our student athletes, whether it's one or whether it's twenty, to, you know, to be in that environment where there are, are more student athletes, and they come back to our team, will it put the rest of our team at risk? You know, those, those are questions that I, that I have. I'm not opposed to looking at that and how we could logistically, you know, make that happen. Does that make sense?
That does. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Becker, Jason Dean here. It looks like the Butler Invitational is April twenty-third.
Yes.
There's an event, there's a scheduled track meet, the twenty-first and the twenty-fourth. So if you have runners, I don't know that you would have runners running three times within four day period.
Typically, no.
The Baldwin Invitational is May seventh, and you have, you have a May fourth and a May eighth, so I don't even know if the timing would work, man. A pole vaulter, I think, might be able to do that, but I don't know if you have a runner. I don't know, Dr. Roberts.
No, your, your, your point, yeah, your point's well made.
It is in a row.
Yeah, I was a different kind of athlete, yes. No, Mark, thank you for that. I want to build on, this is McClintock's observation, and Mark, thank you for agreeing to revisit this conversation.
Sure.
I certainly want to offer that our seniors who have an opportunity at scholarship offers, knowing that we probably have an abbreviated season right now, I want us to, in collaboration with the pandemic team, give serious consideration to having those young people participate in those events. Certainly, we will look at and probably work with our legal team around assuming risk because we do not want to have those athletes go compete in those meets and come back the very next day and interact with other student athletes, and then for whatever reason, we have to end their season, but let's, we are going to be committed, Mrs. McClintock, to see if we can give those young people, in many instances, what is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to vie for scholarships, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Dr. Roberts, and Janine, and Jason. Any other visitors? I'd like to speak, Mr. Senator.
We do. We have Janine Mattern. We also have Carrie Knott. Again, we don't typically let people talk twice, so I'll go ahead and let Janine go.
Okay.
Janine, can you hear me?
Yes. I just have a follow-up. If it's any possibility for those higher-achieving athletes, particularly seniors, if there is, because we always sign, we already signed one waiver. If there is a way for them to sign a waiver with the possibility of upon coming back from that invite having a negative COVID test, usually they take about two days, you can get it right through CBS, no appointment necessary. To give them the opportunity, if they're willing to do their due diligence with the COVID testing upon coming back, is it a possibility with a waiver that those individuals can go?
I think that's all information that the pandemic team would take into consideration in, in reviewing this decision, and we thank you for the information.
Any other ones, Mr. Senator?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks for, for all the speakers. We move on to item three, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, President Winchell. Item number three point zero one, the Responseology Agreement. This is an item that is brought to the Board for Action, and essentially, this is a proposal for an agreement between this organization and Millcreek Township School District to look at our safety and security vulnerability study.
Yeah, let's move that. Have a motion on that, please.
This is Janine. I'll make a motion.
Second, Chris.
Okay, discussion.
A couple of concerns related to this. I want to preface by saying security is an extremely high priority to me, so my concern is not that we are doing this study or that we are proposing to spend twenty-four thousand dollars on this study. I absolutely value security. My questions are related to the choice of this firm. Firstly, because it's not a local firm, they are based in Swickley, Pennsylvania. And secondly, because of the biographical sketch that accompanies this, that describes the credentials that are held by the people, the person that would be conducting these studies. You know, for example, I'm talking about a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology and Anthropology and completing PA Municipal Police Training. When you compare that to local vendors, you know, I'm familiar with, for example, Fisher Security, a local firm. Fisher Security is owned by an Ereit that is a retired special agent with the FBI for twenty-seven years. He holds a BA in Psychology, an MA in Forensic Psychology, and a PhD in Public Safety. My question is, did we look at local vendors for this task?
Do we have Mr. Spiker? Mr. Spiker, certainly he led our research, and I certainly have tremendous gratitude for his efforts. Mr. Senator, do you think, is he on?
He's not.
Mr. Spiker's not on. Mrs. Winchell, I certainly appreciate the comments that you just shared and provided. I, too, am in. I too am incredibly committed to making sure that we are taking advantage of our partnerships at local vendors, and I do not want us to miss an opportunity. Um, as a school district that prides itself on, um, excluding the spirit of collaboration, particularly with some of our local experts. And so I want to respectfully ask the board, while this is somewhat time sensitive, um, that we table this motion, if I may, uh, Mr. Senate, and so that we can revisit, um, this agreement. Certainly, I want to, to make sure that we are staying within the parameters of what is legal and moral as we pursue next steps. But I want to make sure that we are given serious consideration to the, the Fisher cooperation and any other local vendor that we have. Um, and I will get back to the board at our next board meeting, having done, um, some extensive research, that our assistant superintendent and Nate Spiker and team, and have a recommendation for you all.
I would like to just make one quick comment too, because we're going to have to go with a firm that probably has certain credentials. And I, and I think, again, agreeing with you that even if we can use local companies to kind of get the hard work out of the way and maybe fine tune it with a proper one, but I think definitely look locally, because I know there's two firms. Fisher and one at one hundred state. That do that kind of work.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Yeah, we will certainly, um, do our due diligence to get information on all of it.
Okay, I, I mean, I would assume that there have been, that there were other bidders involved in this.
Yes, there were. This is not a single bid.
And I'm not sure that, you know, having, oh, uh, while a local might be preferred, it's certainly not the only criteria.
It is not.
Okay. We do a lot of business with a lot of people that are not in Erie. And I just want to, if it has, if this has been vetted, which I hope it has been, and I guess you'll tell us, um, next time.
Yes.
Um, I guess I don't have a problem with a non-local vendor providing a service that has been bid on properly. I don't think that's a, a reason, the only reason that we should consider, uh, a local vendor. We need the best person qualified.
I think that's like Shirley's comment, and I agree too. We agree with you, John. The education level, I don't think was again, I'm not trying to step on anyone's toes. I think twenty-seven years in FBI versus sociology, you know, sociology degree. Passing a few things.
I think if the company can do the job, whoever does it within that company is, is okay. If the company can give us the product that we want, I, I'm not sure how that argument stands.
And I brought it up because I think security is of the highest priority, and I don't just want to get the job done. I want the job done by the best. And if this is the best, that's fine. I, I question, are they the best? Can we spend some time taking a look at it to see if in fact we are getting the best for our students because safety is so important?
Yeah, it's unfortunate that Nate Spiker wasn't on the call so he could justify or quantify the reason or decision, but based on Dr. Roberts' recommendation for tabling. And then next time, he can be here to, to discuss that. So I guess with that, I'll need a motion.
I can ask one other question.
Oh, yes.
We're looking at the, the scope of this. Obviously, all the school buildings on there, but can I ask why the, the Mill Creek Education Center is on this list? And is that because of state regulation, because it's part of our district that it has to have that same review? Because there are no children in this building, and this building is more secure than any other office building I've ever been in. Or is that a legal requirement that this also falls under a school district building?
I don't recall off the top of my head whether it's just related to school buildings or all facilities. We can double check that in regard to the statute.
Any other questions before we ask for the motion for table?
Motion to table?
Second, Chris.
Okay, we have a first, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against, nay? Okay, motion's table.
Thank you, President Winchell. Item three point zero two, Erie Insurance Arena for the MacDowell graduation. Uh, this item is for board action, and it's the much anticipated, um, graduation of the class of twenty-twenty-one.
Motion, Chris.
Can I have a second?
Second, Dean.
Any discussion? So again, this is for Erie Insurance, and there's three, three time sets, right? Eleven, two o'clock, and five o'clock.
There are three time sets, um, based under the leadership of, uh, Assistant Superintendent Darcy Mosley in collaboration with our MacDowell High School leadership team. Certainly, we wanted to make sure that while we are celebrating our seniors, we are doing so by adhering to all of our mitigation efforts and following the deal which is guidelines, and Mrs. Mosley conveying.
Yes, so, um, right now with the civic arena, they can allow us to have a hundred and eighty students in a session on the floor. So with a class of about five sixty, that does mean that we currently need three, um, sessions. We will do that by alphabetical order at the three times that Mr. Winchell shared. Should something change between now and then, we are ready to pivot. But at this point in time, working with the guidelines and the civic arena's requirements, um, this is, um, our plan at this time.
So this date was selected, well, in advance of our change of the schedule, correct?
It was. This is the date that we have had set. We did look into trying to change the date and move to a weekend date after the school year had ended for contact tracing reasons. That would have been beneficial, obviously, um, but that date was booked. So we are, um, you know, with the date that we had had.
And so what happens to the seniors, the Tuesday and Wednesday? Are they expected in school?
Um, the, the students will always have a senior adjusted schedule. They always have, um, so that there are time to wrap up their grades, um, obligations, et cetera, prior to that graduation ceremony.
Um, I'd like to say, just a simple comment, as a parent of a senior and talking to a number of other parents of seniors, we are so grateful that the district went, um, above and beyond, so we can see our kids walk across the stage. So thank you very much.
Okay, save the date, June seventh. Okay, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? Motion passes. Three point zero three.
I don't have a three point zero three recess coverage. As the board may recall, uh, we brought a very similar request to the board about two months ago, when we were attempting to make sure that in the midst of COVID and having to make some adjustments to coverage for, um, our students in grade scale through five, so that they can have recess in a safe um, and secure fa- fashion, we wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate adults providing coverage to those students. As such, be, um, opted to pay for in collaboration with the Mill Creek Education Association, um, to pay our teachers at a rate of pay of twenty-five dollars and four cents per hour, where students were allowed thirty minutes a day, um, split by two fifteen-minute periods. We are excited about this opportunity to continue to have our young people, um, because of their developmental, developmental needs, experience recess. Recently, most updated guidance from the P D and the Department of Health, um, says that effective Monday, I think this is Mosley, uh, this, this coming Monday, our students will have, uh, not fifteen minutes, but ten minutes. And the reason for the ten minutes is so that we can stay under the fifteen-minute threshold, um, with regards to COVID testing and COVID, uh, contact tracing. So we are proposing, instead of, um, continuing along the vein of the, uh, thirty-day period where we will revisit, um, whether or not we can move to an alternative, um, sort of option for teacher coverage. We're proposing because we, um, will be able to provide funding and support using our, um, the generosity of the S R S fund that for the rest of the school year, we pay for coverage of recess by our teachers at the same rate of twenty-five dollars and four cents an hour.
If you have a motion for that.
Chris.
Chris, motion. Have a second.
Second, Mike.
Any discussion? Maybe ask, uh, Mrs. Mosley, just maybe, uh, expand a little bit on the new guidelines for students for recess?
Yes, we were very excited on Friday when our, um, playground equipment plan was approved by the Department of Health, which will allow us to have our students, um, to be able to use the playground equipment while they are at recess. Um, while it is a short period of time, the students by their class will be able to use that equipment, providing that they wash their hands or sanitize before they go out to the equipment and after. So we're really excited. I think it'll be a whole new level of energy to see our kiddos on the equipment again, and, and we're excited for that to start.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? Motion passes.
President Winchell, this, that concludes the superintendent's report this evening.
Okay, item six, new business. Any new business?
I think Tim's happy that you.
Oh, yeah, I skipped right down to six, didn't I? Okay. Well, it will come back. We item four, slisters. I skipped a couple.
Well, sorry about that. I'm sitting next to you today. If you recall, at our last meeting, uh, I presented the health and safety plan amendment, uh, and we tabled it. And the reason it's not before you tonight is also, as I predicted, uh, we have all kinds of new orders and, and information from the Department of Ed, and we have the new order from, uh, Governor Wolf that went into effect on April fourth in regard to gatherings, the twenty-five percent and the fifty percent of maximum occupancy. We have a new, uh, determination by the Pennsylvania Department of Education that was issued on April fifth, it going into effect today, in regard to the recommendations for going, uh, back to school versus in low of substanti- moderate and substantial levels, changing that, uh, guideline. Uh, we have new information coming out in regard to outdoor play areas and, and cleaning and disinfection from both Department of Health and Department of Education. We have new information in regard to summer recreation camps and other, uh, items, uh, related to that. We have new cleaning and disinfecting information from the CDC. So, and all this came between the la- our last meeting and today. So, uh, as a result, you do not have a new health and safety plan. And to be so, to be honest with you, I'm not sure you're going to have a new health and safety plan by the end of this month either. I, I might, we may all just step back and let the dust settle and, uh, and, and wait for the government to catch up with everything they're doing. So this, that's my report for today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Item five, old business. So we have, uh, one item for old business, and it's the, uh, retreat for the administrative, Dr. Roberts, leave some comments. Well, I guess first of all, let's put a motion out there. Do we have a motion for, to approve the, peak and peak contract for August fifth and sixth for the administrative retreat? No motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve. Janine?
Chris, second.
Discussion.
I guess I have a couple of questions about the retreat. So first off, I do appreciate professional development and do believe that it is valuable and needed for the district to move forward. I do have concerns as to why we're selecting a venue outside of Pennsylvania when we're using Pennsylvania tax dollars to fund this retreat. I also have a concern about the total cost per person that we're coming in at uh, with regard to meals and incidentals compared to what the district typically pays out for meals and incidentals. Um, it's my understanding that meals and incidentals are forty-five dollars per day for a professional development, and this one's running at sixty-one fifty-nine per day, which is pretty far outside the window there.
Thank you, Mr. Linda. I know I have, uh, Kim Damcock, um, our, uh, principal at Walnut Creek Middle School, who's also serving as the lead coordinator for our summer learning academy or summer leadership academy, who is, um, ready to weigh in. Uh, but just allow me to offer a couple of thoughts, um, in preparation for the discussion, and that is one. Uh, clearly, we are committed to, uh, the ongoing professional development and to echo your sentiment, Mr. Linda, this is a priority for us. Uh, we believe that in order for us to gain traction rapidly, um, around our instructional goals, particularly as we think about um, what many districts across the country have been subjected to, and that is significant student learning loss. We know that building the capacity in individuals who are leading schools and leading districts is the way to go. We've seen a plethora of research um, that has echoed this sentiment. It is my understanding, and I'll get historical context as well from the team, that, um, peak and peak is, uh, an environment. It's a venue that we've used in the past, and while it sits outside of the state, I think that is one of the reasons that influenced this decision. Additionally, um, I know one thought that had come up in terms of a question the last time we convened was, why are we looking at single occupancy for our participants? And two reactions are the first is because we're in the midst of pandemic still. And, and while we have about sixty-seven percent of our adults vaccinated, I, uh, have to take the responsibility to make sure that we are not putting individuals, um, in twos in a single room, not knowing their status. The second is, I think in order for us, um, not to minimize a potentially rich experience for the leaders of this district, including school leaders, and they are principals, assistant principals, members of the student support team, curriculum team, and core team, to have an enhanced, um, powerful and educative experience. We want to make sure that, uh, we are in a space where we can remain focused as we benefit from, um, a really robust set of team-building activities, as opposed to just being in a much more local venue where individuals may opt to leave, opt to go home. And while we cannot restrict anyone, we just thought the environment would provide us with those opportunities. At this point, I'll pause. Um, I know Mrs. Mosley is certainly available to respond as well, but have, um, Mrs. Damcock just weigh in. Share any thoughts?
Hi, good evening. Um, so I'm in the position of just trying to execute Dr. Roberts' vision, and he didn't want to include that overnight component. So that's why there would be the cost difference from what we typically spend. Um, that's the biggest portion of it is the hotel rooms, which we did get locked in um, at a rate of ninety-nine dollars per night, um, which was a very good rate. Did take a look at some Pennsylvania alternatives, and I provided that chart to Dr. Roberts today. Um, but if you take a look there, you know, it's a little bit tricky because we have speakers coming in, um, that are funded through the Easter's money for professional development that need access to an airport and need to be close enough that we can have driving distance. Um, so some of the alternatives that were suggested by the board that I looked at are a little bit tricky in that way. And we also have, um, forty individuals that will be staying, so we need occupancy and meeting space, um, to be able to accommodate up to forty individuals. So those were some of the factors, you know, in trying to get far enough away for it to be a retreat style, but close enough that people are able to get there and not have to spend two nights, which is going to up the price at another venue. I'm happy to take any other questions. Anyone has any?
I have a question. Um, so forty of our, this is for the administrators, are going to be in a room together. Has this been brought to the pandemic coordinator, or is there any concern about having, um, our staff together like that during this retreat?
Yeah, it is utilizing a room, um, at the peak that is, um, you know, you can put a hundred guests for a wedding in it, so it's, um, you know, a large space, and we have two additional breakout rooms, um, in addition to that, so that we're able to meet all of the COVID guidelines and be able to spread out appropriately. And then some of our meals will be outside as well in order to facilitate that.
So when you were looking at other Pennsylvania sites, there was nothing between here and Pittsburgh utilizing, uh, state facilities, universities, colleges, or large conference centers that would have put you within airport range and also gotten you a little further away. Um, forty-five minutes is basically in the backyard. People could still go home for that overnight rich experience. In my experience, you usually want to be at least an hour and a half to two hours from home to not need that two nights, but also to deter from leaving.
So I did look at three alternatives. Um, you know, it, the further you get, the more mileage we're paying, and I know a lot of administrators, you know, have families and young children, that it's a little tricky to be away for two nights. Um, and you do have an administrative staff, many of whom did not utilize their vacation last year. So we're utilizing a model where we're pulling people for two separate sessions, one in July where we stay locally, and then the second at Peak and Peak, um, is the proposed location where we're able to get that professional development and team-building time in while still being considerate to people's schedules and still being considerate to people's schedules and family time.
Guess I'm confused there. Pittsburgh is two hours away. You can make that without an overnight. If you leave at eight, you can be there by 10:00.
We have the session starting at 8:00 AM in order to maximize workdays.
Who pays for the balance of this? Is it ESRS money? I mean, there's, I, I heard that some of the speakers are paid with ESRS money, but this whole overall component, is it the district or is it ESRS or combination?
It'll be a combination. We have our own, I mean, on an annual basis, we have a professional development budget that'll pay for the speakers, some of the other areas will be paid on ESRS.
You have a feel for what the total would be, 50% out of our fund, or?
It'd probably be pretty big. I would have to go back and let you know, but it's probably pretty close to 50%.
Erin, is there a?
When you add in speakers and the other components to the entire program.
Erin, is there a possibility of partnering with some private entities that, you know, could help underrate some of this expense? I mean, it's not unusual to go to a training session or something like that, that at noon, you know, someone sponsors lunch, and then they would talk about wellness, whether financial wellness or health wellness, you know, we have a partnership with any health network to help underwrite some of the costs of that. You know, typically, you know, some of the vendors we use or something, I'd love to get in front of, you know, the administration of Mill Creek, you know, to discuss, you know, what they have to offer in line, as long as it doesn't replace anything that the administration wants to discuss at lunch or at dinner, something like that. But typically, it's like a working lunch, and you can talk about wellness, but they will help underrate some of the expense of the retreat.
I think that is a possibility. I mean, you could reach out to, hi Mark, or, you know, AHN specifically, to find that out. I would have to look at the schedule. I'm not sure there's room within the schedule.
Yeah, I understand.
Is that possible?
But those are typically ways to kind of get that additional revenue to help sponsor that, and typically do that, that may help, you know, create some other opportunities down the road to sponsor other events, to expand that relationship. My only, let me get this closer. My comment, this is important work, I understand that, but one of the things too, I think, would be helpful for the board if this does get approved, is to have some feedback from the people that are there, what they learned, and how they're going to use this. You know, we hear a lot from Ian and Darcy, you know, at the meetings, but some of these other people that are gonna be there, you know, what was their big takeaway from this project? You know, down the road, you know, obviously, this is in July, we don't meet in July, but it would be a good takeaway.
I, I think, Mr. Wintle, that that's an excellent, an excellent ask, and I think our principals and other administrators would be, you know, very happy to share. Right now, our schedule is tight, that doesn't mean that we can't look at doing something like that. I think it's a good suggestion, Mr. Wintle, thank you. We have made the whole focus right now instructional leadership. Ms. Damcock is doing her internship right now, and that is why she has really, you know, taken a lead role and has been so beneficial and helpful with all of the planning for this event. But we can look at that. We can also certainly make a, you know, wrap-up so that the board can hear what the takeaways were from our administrative team, and you can see that and learn and hear directly from our administrative team. The other thing I think that just might be important is, Erin, I believe you said that about $5,000 annually we spend on the retreat when we are renting the room typically for multiple days in town at the Shriners, which includes multiple days of day-long events of rental of that facility. So I think when you make that comparison to, to what has already been typically spent in a year for this kind of big professional development push for our administrative team, yes, this is an increase, but there are some added benefits. We are looking to do the three days in July at the J.S. Wilson Library, and then the overnight, you know, e- event to really solidify and be in alignment with, you know, Dr. Roberts' ambition for us and our dedicated time to do some team-building, as well as the additional professional development with, you know, that instructional excellence at the hard B agenda, you know, seemed like a reasonable ask along with the ability to utilize some ESRS funds to offset costs this year.
I have a question to follow up to that. So if we're using the ESRS funds, that's nothing we have to approve, but do we get an idea of like how much we're using for the funds that have, are associated with this retreat, like for speakers or renting a program?
We would use the sp- the entire amount, the speaker component of it would be covered. The Peak, this contract in front of you would be most likely used out of our professional development, but the remaining cost would be covered by.
What would the remaining cost be for? Just, not specifically, but like, what kind of thing?
The speaker, I'm not sure if there is.
Materials and supplies, facilitators, fees, you know, we're bringing in consultants and experts. Those are essentially the two.
Are we bringing in experts and consultants?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So how much is that component then? That will be used in the ballpark? 5,000, 10?
I think, have we not assigned, I think based on our conversation, up to $50,000 for School Leadership Academy?
That was for the total. I believe at this point, it's gonna come about 40, with 30 of that directly towards speakers and professional development through the ESRS funding.
For the five days.
Yes.
The total of five days, so it's both.
The whole year.
No, the entire Leadership Academy is five days.
The what? I'm sorry.
SLA is, it's a five-day event. Three days we're gonna be at J.S. Wilson.
I see.
And then the two days, Peak and Peak.
What are the benefits of?
I, I was just going to say, I, I'm unable to understand the rationale for lodging 40 people at a cost of over $5,000 in a location 45 minutes from our school district. I think the prices for meals are very high, and you have to realize that this is taxpayer money. At the same meeting that we're discussing the possibility of an increase in taxes, I'm at a loss as to how we can justify a proposal like this that does not seem necessary. Would it be nice? Absolutely, it would be nice. You know, $99 sounds like a great room fee, but it's 45 minutes from Erie. In addition to that, there's a $1,999 resort fee that's being paid. I, I just don't think that it's necessary for us to hold this at a resort at such a high cost. I don't show, I don't see that it shows a commitment to fiscal responsibility. One person's opinion.
Do we reimburse for gas when the staff drives up there? So is that, okay, so they would.
Professional development, if you were to drive to Harrisburg, we would.
Okay.
Agreed with Shirley a little bit. I mean, I, I can defend, I guess, I know what Darcy's saying, that there's a minimal, maybe a minor difference between the Shriners and, and maybe the cost of going to the peak, but I find it much easier to defend to the taxpayer that we spent professional development money and reserve for Shriners than I would that we were going to the peak and having steak dinners and staying overnight. It, it's just, I agree, it just doesn't sit well as a taxpayer.
So is it possible to President Wintle's proposal to go see if we can get this underwritten by somebody to help us out? Get us back to, you know, at least half, you know, where it is right now? Maybe even go back and look at that component for the resort fee? What do we get for that? That's a big chunk.
Well, Jason, I agree with you. I was thinking the same thing. Is it possible? We, I mean, we're, we're a fairly large school district, and, and I really do, I, I understand why we wanna do this for our teachers. I understand the benefit, the camaraderie, the team-building, what they're going to get out of it. And it's also, would it be nice for the peak, who's probably lost some business, but would they be willing to negotiate on the price? I mean, giving them some pushback, saying, hey, you know, our board is asking, will you, you negotiate on the room fee? Will you negotiate on the meal fee or something? And maybe get a discount. And then, Rick, to your, to your comment about, it sounds like it's more optics, it's not the money that we're spending, and we'd be okay spending the same amount of money going to Shriners, because it's not quite so sexy, but we don't wanna spend it going to the peak. And that, that I don't agree with. If we're gonna spend it, and the teachers who have worked their butt off this year, I, I know it's taxpayer money, I get that, but they have done a lot of work. We're asking them to do a lot going forward, and what Dr. Roberts is putting in place for the team-building and the, just the general learning that they're going to be doing here, it is a resort, but they're working the whole time. I, I mean, if we can get a discount, that's fantastic, but I, I also believe that if it's just optics, because it's a resort and not the Shriners, what are they getting out of it? What, what are they gonna come back to us and tell us what they've, what they've learned, how it's gonna benefit our students? We pay for professional development anyway. This just happened to be at someplace that raises eyebrows, but if we'd spend the same money at Shriners, then I think we have to really consider what they're going to get out of it, how it's going to impact their development and how it will benefit the district as a whole.
Counter that a little bit, Janine. If we did do it at Shriners, or someplace locally, the room charge is.
Okay.
5,000, the dinner charge is another 1,700, so that's 57, $6,700 out of 10 grand. So that's 1/20 of our deficit of this year's budget.
And we ask for a discount? Have we asked for a discount?
Well, have we looked at other venues? I mean, why does it have to be Peak and Peak? Why can't it, I know we talking around it, but I only see one proposal here. I mean, did we talk to someone else in local or in New York? I don't know.
To reiterate, Mrs. Damcock's sharing, yes, we looked at other venues. One of the attractions is, again, as we're thinking about being in a place that will allow us to socially distance, a large room for 40 individuals that can be spaced out. Additionally, I want to respectfully submit that the professional development, while we can certainly explore some other venues, time is of the essence. There are other places that are likely to be booked very quickly. I also want to submit that this is not a nice-to-have. This is a must-have. The return in investment around providing this kind of targeted and differentiated professional development for our school leaders, given what we're expecting of them, given what they've endured this year, is something that I'm, I feel incredibly confident about bringing to the board. Just allow me to add that while we, as a core team, have sat down over the last several months and formulated a plan in collaboration with our principals to make sure that we are all rowing in the right direction, it was really refreshing to see the Educational Trust, a noted and nationally-recognized think-thank in collaboration with the Wallace Foundation, which is based in New York, and it's an unpartisan, independent, endowed, philanthropy-working with national organizations, just released research in the last couple of weeks that pointed out that there is overwhelming evidence that in order for schools and school districts to move at a rapid pace, and in order for them to utilize evidence-based strategies for improvement and effectiveness of these leaders, there are four areas that need to be focused on. And those are areas that are all built in to the objectives that we have for our professional development, the quality of principal leadership, and we know that there is a lot of data that shows that it affects student learning, and I know that the board is not questioning the outcome of the professional development, but I'm hearing that we're questioning the optics. Time is of the essence, and certainly, if it pleases the board for us to probably delay this and go back to try to find another venue, we'll do so, but would certainly be with some amount of regret if we're not able to secure a venue outside of one of our school buildings for this retreat.
What's the timing on this? How long will they hold this if we ask to come back at the next board meeting? Would, would the Peak still hold this venue for us?
Mrs. Damcock?
May 10th is the date.
May 10th?
That gives us some time to explore some of the other options, see if it meets the needs of the agenda, professional development agenda.
Our next meeting is two weeks from tonight? Yeah, 26.
I, I just want to comment, the, my only concern is not just the optics of it. My concern is the actual spending of that amount of money. That amount of money, I'm not saying that professional development is not important. It absolutely is. I'm not saying that these people did not work hard this year. They absolutely did. It is my opinion that when you are using taxpayer money, you do not take people to a resort. That, that just to me crosses a line that I'm not willing to cross.
So Erin, two weeks give you time to try to find some partners for the private sector to help underrate some of this expense?
Yeah, I'll call our vendors that we work closely with first and foremost, see if they gave their interest.
Tell them we'll put a banner up.
And there'll be different venues being proposed to, that we can compare?
We had, Ms. Damcock had actually researched three others, just so that you are aware. The Gateway Lodge in Pittsburgh, PA, which is an hour and 48 minutes away, that was an $18,000 rental fee, but they could only accommodate 25 people with the current, like, conditions. The Nature's Inn in Howard, PA, which is three hours and 17 minutes away, was a cost of $5,400, but they had no availability for our July or August dates. And the Toph Trees, which is three hours and eight minutes away, was a, a cost of $11,920. So she had looked at some other Pennsylvania options that could accommodate the size, as well as have a, an overnight experience to, you know, again, be in line with our, our vision, but we can explore other options as well.
I think the double occupancy is a non-starter. I'm not tearing a room with Mike.
I know, we're not going, as an example.
I think you're both vaccinated.
So, as, as you're looking at locations, may I also suggest, you might wanna look at colleges and universities. They typically have conferencing services, they do not typically charge for rooms. There's a lot of colleges and universities between here to Pittsburgh that have not had a lot of occupancy this year, that I'm sure would be willing to do just about anything, to have some people on their campuses, which might not be a bad thing for some of our administrators to also get some exposure to some of our local colleges that our students may attend.
Yeah, we've done some retreats down at Slippery Rock.
Slippery Rock, IUP, Pitt, I mean, there's, there's plenty between here and there. I mean, there's probably a good three dozen from here to Pittsburgh.
We'll certainly explore those as well.
So we need to vote or table? So I'm hearing a table. Okay, you have a motion for a table?
Make a motion, we table 5.01.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? Motion's table. Okay. Any other old business? Hearing none. Six, new business. New business. Hearing no, new business. Seven, remarks. School board remarks.
Dr. Roberts usually takes this time to highlight accomplishments and give recognition to worthy members of our school community, and I would like to take a moment to recognize Dr. Roberts for all that he is doing for Mill Creek Township School District. In less than a year, he's listened, learned, and led us on a path to increased excellence. I'm not going to try and list all of the accomplishments of his over these past several months, but I'd like to highlight three of them. Number one, planning for the summer initiatives. For the first time ever, MTSD will have a Leadership Academy for Administration, Summer Learning Lab for students, and a Math Academy for teachers and administrators. Number two, planning for a virtual school option for students moving forward. The pandemic has had many negative consequences, but Dr. Roberts continues to emphasize the positive changes in education that will come as a result. that will come as a result of the pandemic. And third, under his leadership and commitment to increase rapport with Mill Creek Education Association, one-year contract extension was signed so that the focus of next year will be totally on students and learning. Teachers have the security of a contract in place. As I said, there are many, many other accomplishments of this dedicated, extremely hardworking visionary. I want to be sure that amidst the robust conversations, the questioning, the issues, and the concerns, we also take time to acknowledge our gratitude and our support of this truly gifted leader. Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mrs. Winchell. That is heartwarming and certainly much appreciated. Um, there's a quote that says, leaders become great not because of their power, but because of their ability to empower those that they lead. So just tremendous gratitude. What you've outlined and highlighted, I can only take credit for about five percent. Ninety-five percent is done by the team that is sitting to my right. So I want to certainly thank um, the team for the work they have done. I know that there may be other remarks, but uh, since I have the floor, President Winchell, may I share brief remarks? So we returned to school in September eighth, twenty twenty, and similar to more than about ninety percent of our schools in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And across the country, quite frankly, we started a year a much, amid much uncertainty, but full of hope and a focus on the proverbial light that we thought we saw at the end of the tunnel. But our teachers, we have been able to track our teacher and staff attendance for this entire year with the help of our personnel department. And quite frankly, we have been impressed with their unbelievable commitment. Not just for teachers, but staff and school leaders, as they have showed up, they have showed up day in and day out to serve our children. Case in point, during the past two weeks or so, uh, we continuously look at comparative data for our teacher attendance. And we've actually seen that four of our ten school sites had slightly lower teacher attendance in the previous week, which means that most of our school sites, in spite of where we sit, have increased teacher attendance. Approximately seventy percent of our folks, teacher, staff, leaders have been vaccinated. The confirmed number as of two weeks ago being about sixty-seven percent, all of whom have been exposed to all three of the vaccines. The dedication of our teachers and staff and their efforts have been brilliant. In terms of our students, the reason why we are all here, during the past seven months and exactly twelve days, a journey which officially marked our first quarter on September eighth, we were able to track, monitor, and tweak our practices with the goal of ensuring that our students are receiving what they needed academically and socially emotionally. We supported teachers, staff, and leaders in our buildings under the MEC to make sure that they always felt seen, heard, and supported. And we convened several meetings with parents and community members as we continuously strive to elevate our spirit of collaboration and to remind the community and parents that we value their voices, we value their insights, and we appreciate their partnership. Ladies and gentlemen, as a result of COVID nineteen and the positivity rate in the Erie County community, and subsequently, the positive cases of adults and children who work in and attend schools in our district, we have moved towards our virtual instructional option for several schools many times. Each time prioritizing the safety and well-being of one hundred percent of our students as well as the adults who serve them. Although we selected this option of moving towards our virtual model approximately a half a dozen times or so or more, we saw teachers and staff exhibiting diligence to our mission, the mission of providing students with a world-class education. Yes, we are the first to admit that in spite of our first and most brilliant efforts during the earlier months, we fell short many times. We fell short attempting to provide synchronous teaching and learning. But rest assured, because of our teachers and leaders, because of their persistence, we saw significant improvement in all of our instruction delivery models across grade. And some of you board members have even echoed because of your own personal experience, where we have seen our teachers really rise to the occasion and deliver instruction in many different models. All, for several weeks in the months of November, December, twenty twenty, Erie County and several other counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was in substantial for COVID nineteen positivity rates. On November thirtieth, as a district, we embarked upon our multifactorial approach to decision-making, reviewed the most up-to-date public health data, followed the guidance of the DOH and our pandemic team, received feedback from parents and teachers, and as a result, we decided to pivot towards a one hundred percent virtual model. During that time that the model was in place from November thirtieth, twenty twenty to January fourth, twenty twenty twenty-one for grades K eight, we experienced positive both quantitative and qualitative data in the form of increased student engagement and assignments across all grades. More than one hundred teachers were observed and received feedback from their school and district leaders. And we saw noticeable increases in student academic achievement as measured by formative assessments, as well as really positive qualitative feedback from parents who were saying, yes, now my child is really engaged. They're getting exactly what they need. In spite of the fact that there were some students that we were not able to meet their needs every day. By the end of this week in which we sit, we will have less than forty days, less than forty days remaining in what is a memorable but yet celebratory school year. And these are days that are filled with lots of promise. The promise of our seniors finalizing preparations for their end of high school assignments, while balancing these with college applications, selection to the military academies, and several who are seriously considering workforce options, the promise of the next forty days. Our eighth graders are experiencing, as you can imagine, the built-up anxiety of a fast approaching ninth grade year. That probably makes them have sleepless nights at times, thinking about embarking on their career at a school that has more than two thousand students. I can only imagine. Our fifth graders are having very similar anxiety and experiences about their imminent arrival to middle school, the place that I'm sure they've heard so much about. Ladies and gentlemen, during the next forty days, we will embrace this promise, this promise of continued rigorous pedagogical delivery in whatever model we choose to. A model that will be differentiated to meet the needs of one hundred percent of our students in terms of their preparation for particip- participation, engagement, and success on state and auto summative assessments. These are all parts of the promise of the next forty days. Board, parents, community members, we have been and remain committed to being an emergent organization and an early adopter for anything that is creative and innovative, but certainly that is groundbreaking in this age of K-12 schooling during a pandemic. We have been at the forefront of a lot of initiatives. This could not have been done only on the strength of the core team. Our teachers, staff, parents, and certainly you as a board have been incredibly supportive and grounded in your governance. And for that, we thank you. To provide a brief recent historic perspective, when you approved on November twenty-fourth for us to return to full-time in-person face-to-face learning four days a week, there were lots of gas throughout Erie community. But you had the foresight to recognize that like us, we have to get our students back into our buildings. In our after-action review as a core team, we reviewed this decision and it became very clear to us that we and you, the board, made the right decision. We arrived at this conclusion because our student attendance and engagement rates increased astronomically. Our teacher attendance was the strongest that it has been in months, and in some instances, based on the feedback from one principal, is the strongest teacher attendance that he saw on the first day when students returned back the four days of instruction. I would have you know that we have maintained fidelity to partnering with the PDE and the DOH, and we follow their guidance throughout. Ladies and gentlemen, with this data that I've just shared and our recent updates and changes in the attendance of students, although we have no comparative data between March thirteenth, twenty twenty of last year for teachers, and it's the same for students, but with the public health data compared to the same period last year, we've seen a shift in engagement during our classes with all of our students back, excuse me, the four days a week in person. I want to remind you that according to the data from John Hopkins University, Pennsylvania is still one of five states that accounted for approximately forty-three percent of new COVID cases during the last week. Yes, during the last week. While the light is at the end of the tunnel, we are still in a place where we can be in harm's way. Additionally, as I close, as a point of information, relative to our neighboring school districts and those throughout the state, the number of students attending our in-person learning opportunities are incredibly strong and impressive. In grades K through five, for example, we have eighty-one percent of our students are in person in kindergarten, eighty percent in the first grade, eighty percent in second, eighty-two percent in the third, eighty-one percent in the fourth, and eighty-seven percent of our fifth graders are attending in person. At our secondary level, seventy, sorry, eighty-six percent of our students in the sixth grade are in person. Eighty-eight percent in the seventh are in person, eighty-two percent in the eighth are in person. And we saw a little bit of a sort of whining of the data as we get to our high school. We have seventy-eight percent in-person attendance in the ninth grade, seventy-three percent in tenth, seventy-one percent eleventh, and sixty-nine percent in the twelfth grade. We know our twelfth graders are having senioritis. Ladies and gentlemen, as one of the first districts in the country to return students to the classroom this year, we have seen the firsthand impact of in-person learning, and we have seen what it can have on students' academic success as well as their social emotional. Our administration, our core team, in collaboration with our school leaders, we understand that even the most robust virtual instructional model cannot supplant strong in-person instruction. However, our commitment remains to all stakeholder groups. And there is a strong desire to remain consistent with our children and their educational experience during the last quarter of the year. With this said, my recommendation and guidance to the board this evening is anchored in three data points, as I summarize. Students, we've interviewed and spoken with them as we have attended student panels at each of our instructional rounds. And they have echoed their desire to attend school in a consistent model as she, as they have shared with us. Consistently, they wanted us to make sure that we understand that they wanted to remain in some model without changing back and forth. We saw students increase their academic achievements, their love of learning, and you have to, and some of you have experienced this when you visited schools, the palpable joy of being back in school for those four days. Secondly, the need for consistency around academic scheduling and some of the logistical considerations that we have to think about, such as transportation, food service, student support services. These were all reviewed and given much consideration by Mr. O'Toole, the maintenance, finance, and budgeting team. And last, but certainly not least, the feedback from some of our most valued partners or parents. At all grade levels, they've shared that our current model has resulted in improved academic achievements, engagement from their children while learning, and many of them have echoed that it has lessened the burden on their own family life to have children back in the building. Four days. With that said, and I thank you for listening. I hereby come to you with humility and recommend that our district, for the last forty days of the school year, or our last quarter, as we get in towards the red zone, to have a winning year. And we remain in our current instructional model based on the aforementioned data and know that every single adult who serves our students will give you one hundred percent of our efforts in this four days a week for the rest of the year. That concludes my remarks.
Anyone want to follow that up?
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
I'd just like to congratulate our, uh, tier team that won state title.
Yeah. Congratulations to our tier team. State title, state chance.
Of course, Deena Probonik and team, we certainly would be remiss if we did not. Absolutely. So congratulations to them. Thank you for that, Mr.
Any other remarks? Okay, hearing none. Just as a reminder again, uh, this meeting and all our committee meetings were recorded and visit us on our websites. It's www.mtsd.org. And visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. Uh, item eight, adjournment. You have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
One, one item?
Oh.
I, I'd like to thank everyone that's responsible for this room.
Oh, yeah.
Fantastic. The acoustics are perfect. The lighting's perfect. Everything's great. Thank you for designing it and making it work.
Yep, very, very good.
You, Mike, Tim, Aaron, Joe.
Good job. Thanks, John, for bringing that out. So we have a motion. We have a second, more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And say nay.